Good morning. I will call to order the February 23, 2021 special meeting of the Santa Barbara County Board of Supervisors. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Supervisor Williams.
Here.
Supervisor Hart.
Here.
Supervisor Hartman.
Here.
Supervisor Lavignino.
Here.
And Chair Nelson.
Here. At this time, please stand and join the board in pledging allegiance to the flag.
Ready to begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Well, before we get started, I just wanted to thank Vice Chairwoman Hartman for handling the chairmanship duties or chairwomanship duties last meeting. I appreciate you pinch hitting for me. Thank you. Madam Clerk, are there any announcements or changes to the agenda today?
Chair Nelson and members of the board, I have a couple of quick announcements this morning. I am pleased to announce the addition of the Santa Barbara County Board of Supervisors' projected calendar that will be published on the last agenda of every month to display the projected items coming before the board for the following month. Please note on today's agenda, the Board of Supervisors' projected calendar for March 2021 begins on page six. I would also like to remind the public that the Board of Supervisors' meetings are now being interpreted in Spanish. Coax subscribers can turn on SAP under their language settings. Comcast is updating its system and should be broadcasting board meetings in Spanish by the end of March 2021. Lastly, Chair Nelson and members of the board, I would like to remind the public who are participating in our meeting today of the Board's alternative methods of public participation. For alternative methods of public participation and to provide public comment on general public comment or an item on the Board's agenda, please see page two of our agenda. Individuals that would like to provide verbal public comment, you may do so via Zoom by registering in advance via the link available on page two. After registering, you will receive a confirmation email containing information about joining the Zoom meeting. Once the chair has announced the item you want to comment on, please join the meeting with this information provided in the registration confirmation email. The clerk will call you by name or the last four digits of your phone number. When removed from mute, you will hear a notification that your line has been unmuted. If you are using a touch-tone phone, you may need to press star six to unmute yourself. Again, if you're using a touch-tone phone, you may need to press star six to unmute yourself. Each person may address the board for up to three minutes, and this is at the discretion of the chair. If you have any questions, please contact the clerk of the board at 805-568-2240. Again, that number is 805-568-2240. Those are all my announcements this morning.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. Before we move on, Supervisor Hartman, do you have a question?
Yes, I just had a comment, and that is I wanted to underscore public engagement is really one of our fundamental principles of county government. And so to have our meetings available to people in Spanish is a major step forward. And to have the full month ahead notice of upcoming items for the board is also a major step forward. All of us is smarter than any one of us, and if we can engage our community in meeting its needs, we're going to have a better government able to serve them. So just wanted to highlight that again.
Yes, thank you Supervisor Hartman. We agree. The next item of business is the County Executive Officer's report. Assistant CEO Masnissich, is there a county CEO's report today?
There's no report this morning. Thank you.
And welcome. Now is the time for the members of the public to speak on items that are not on the agenda. Madam Clerk, are there any requests to speak on items not on today's agenda?
Chair Nelson and members of the board, yes, we have five requests to speak on general public comment today. If you have signed up for general public comment, now is the time to log into Zoom to provide your comments to the board. We will begin with Katie Mickey. And as of now, that is our only request to speak, and hopefully the other members of the board are logging in as we speak.
All right. Ms. Mickey, please proceed.
Dear County Board of Supervisors, Safe Technology for Santa Barbara County has been in dialogue with you since December 2019, requesting protection from the multiple issues surrounding wireless telecom facilities. They combust and are unsafe in our high fire zones. They reduce property values on average 20%. They're unattractive aesthetically. There are thousands of scientific studies indicating that they cause biological harms. They are operating with no monitoring of power, and they're installed within feet of our residential homes. Prior to December 2019, Santa Barbara County's telecom code prohibited small cell antennas in residential zones and mixed zones and required proof of gap in service. We want those protections restored. Safe Tech SBC looks forward to a one-hour meeting with county council, the Board of Supervisors, their staff, and Public Works with the nation's number-one telecom attorney, Andrew Campanelli. He has written protective ordinances throughout the United States. In the letter accompanying this, I have sent you a link showing Campanelli explaining to the Development Board of Pittsfield, Massachusetts, explaining the authority granted to local government through the interplay of the Telecommunications Act, subparagraph 332(c)(7a), and ruling of the United States First Court Circuit of Appeals on what cities can do to ensure they retain their authority regarding placement of cell antennas in neighborhoods. Article 332(c)(7a) gives local government the authority to enact protections in their code, including spatial distancing from residences unless no other feasible alternative exists, and requiring applicants to prove a gap in service. We look forward to your meeting with Mr. Campanelli to discuss the legal analysis and answer questions regarding how your hands are not tied. Thank you. Katie Mickey, Director of the Santa Barbara Body Therapy Institute.
Thank you, Ms. Mickey. Is there any other public commenters?
Chair Nelson and members of the board, unfortunately, that was our only request to speak on general public comment. I am seeing a raised hand, which is not a feature that we use for this board, from Gina Soueia. She had requested to speak on departmental item number one, but perhaps we can hear from her if she wanted to speak on general public comment.
What was her last name?
I'm sorry if I mispronounced this, but Gina Soueia.
Gina, are you here to speak on the homelessness issue, or are there other items that you'd like to address the board about?
The homelessness issue, so I can wait if that's more appropriate.
It is, thank you. We look forward to hearing from you later. Okay. We'll go ahead and close public comment, general public comment. And next item is departmental item number one. Madam Clerk, will you please read that item into the record?
Chair Nelson and members of the board, departmental item number one is from Community Services. It is a hearing to consider recommendations regarding Phase Two of the Community Action Plan to address homelessness.
All right. Thank you. Before we get started, I just wanted to kick it off. You know, today's meeting is a special meeting in the first one of the year, first one as supervisor and chair for myself. Homelessness is a public health crisis that existed prior to the pandemic and will be here afterwards. And there's no vaccination on the horizon, but there's a lot of hard work. In 2018, as a staffer, I worked with the City of Lompoc and county department heads to work on a project to clean the San Yves Riverbed and help those homeless in that community move on from that environment. It was a very sobering experience. It was an opportunity for me to see people at their worst, an opportunity to see society hit rock bottom and keep digging. But it was also an experience where I got a chance to see victories. Was able to see case management, interdisciplinary collaboration, and it became real to me that if we put our collective heads together and work together, that there are some real solutions on the horizon. So today's meeting is to focus on the issue of homelessness. We have a few presentations from various departments. My plan is to hear each presentation, there's actually three of them in sections, and then open it up to my colleagues for questions. Also, after each speaker from the various departments open up for questions, then we'll hear from the public. Then we'll take a small break, and then we'll come back for hopefully a very robust discussion among my colleagues about some of the solutions and how we can, as a county, work better together to address these needs. So with that, I believe I'd turn it over to George Chapchan, the Department Head for Community Services.
Good morning, Chair Nelson and members of the board. Thank you very much for the opportunity to present on the current state of homelessness in today's special workshop. Community Services, the Fire Chief, Be Well, Public Defender, and County Council will be taking us through an update on the current state of homelessness, efforts to address encampments, the multidisciplinary teams, legal considerations, and then moving into presenting the system-level goals and strategies of the Phase Two Community Action Plan for consideration and adoption. Kimberly Albers will be starting today's presentation off with an update on current trends and funding around homelessness. Dinah Lockhart will be presenting the Phase Two Plan later in the presentation, and she'll lead the discussion. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Kimberly. We'll start with the current state of homelessness.
Thank you, Ms. Albers.
Yes, is the slide presentation available?
It's up and ready for you.
Okay, so I would be starting at Slide Three, I believe, Mr. There we go. Chair Nelson and members of the board, the current state of homelessness demands our bold action to provide housing, shelter, and services. Many community-based partners, county departments, community members, and other local government entities have been building a system of care that strives to provide the housing intervention and services that each individual or family experiencing homelessness needs to make it home. It is a work in progress, and I'm encouraged today to be here to share about recent investments and trends so that we can work together toward the long-term solutions. The most devastating impact of homelessness is for the person experiencing it. COVID-19 has further limited access to food, restrooms, and shelter. Yet, as we will see on the next slide, the unsheltered population is increasing. The number of encampments, the amount of, oh, sorry, I'm going to stay on that slide just for a moment. The number of encampments, the amount of belongings in encampments, the risks and negative impacts of the person living in an encampment and the surrounding community are growing. And the recent increases in resources are one-time resources, often with quick expenditure deadlines and prescribed requirements. There's a critical need for reliable, ongoing funding to address the housing crisis. So let me to the next slide. The point-in-time count is an annual look at the population experiencing homelessness on a single night of the year in late January. The Continuum of Care received a waiver from the Department of Housing and Urban Development because of COVID-19. The waiver allowed us not to go out and canvass the community to conduct an unsheltered point-in-time count due to the potential health risks. The continuum facilitated by Community Services did conduct a sheltered point-in-time count on the night of January 27, 2021, about three weeks ago. Each number represents a person with a unique story and challenges. There is a significant decrease in the number of persons occupying our normal shelter and transitional housing operations. The orange bar represents the number of persons in shelter each year. Our shelter system staff and residents have managed COVID-19 outbreaks and capacity reductions because of the need for increased physical distancing. They are some of the heroes of this pandemic. For 2021, the sheltered population is divided between the year-round programs in orange and the temporary emergency shelters in green. One year ago, there were 674 persons sleeping in our regular year-round shelter programs. In 2021, only 407 persons were guests in those same year-round shelters. The green bar represents the persons that we were able to move into temporary emergency shelters, 126 persons. So that leaves our total sheltered as 533, a 20% decrease from 2020. And the temporary emergency shelters included our Roomkey, the Warming Centers, and the Isla Vista pop-up shelter. The blue bar is strictly a projection of the unsheltered population based on data modeling and includes persons living in their vehicles. The number of persons unsheltered across the county is projected based on the relationship between previous point-in-time counts and data collected in the Homeless Management Information System and incorporates outreach and coordinated entry trends in the current data. The goal of the projection is to provide an estimate of the current population for planning purposes. This number will not be used for state or federal reporting. The unsheltered population is projected to have been 1,662 on the night of the point-in-time count. The next slide. Another way we view the current state of homelessness is through the lens of the number of people served over a year period. This chart reflects the 4,226 people housed and unhoused in the system of care. New projects like Home Key Studios, the new permanent supportive housing project that PATH is administering, and increases in rapid rehousing through Good Samaritan and New Beginnings and other providers, all are represented in this number served. There is a notable increase in the number served, as we would expect with the new resources between 2019 and 2020, for both adults and children. And I wanted to note, while the adult number seems to dwarf the child's number, that does, there's 768 children that experienced homelessness in 2020 in Santa Barbara County, and 33% of the 768 children were under the age of five. The increase in children served is primarily attributable to the growth in the Department of Social Services Housing Support Program, which serves CalWorks families experiencing homelessness. And the Department of Social Services began entering data into the Homeless Management Information System early in 2020 so we could capture this valuable data. A single person may represent an enrollment in Street Outreach into the emergency shelter, an emergency shelter navigation center, and then into a permanent housing placement. So they would be shown as one-time even if they were enrolled in all three programs. The Board of Supervisors also requested that Community Services begin collecting residency history in 2018. Nearly all of the persons served over the past year responded to a series of questions regarding previous residents. And two of the questions are highlighted here. Where did you become homeless? Where 79% of respondents said Santa Barbara County. And how long have you lived in Santa Barbara County? Where 61% said a majority of their life, and another 10% said between five and 10 years. Slide, we'll go to the next slide. This slide attempts to answer the question, where does the money go? The chart only includes dedicated funds to providing housing and services to families and individuals experiencing homelessness. This does not include dollars being spent on impacts of homelessness such as law enforcement, Public Works, and healthcare costs. Those are not currently tracked as part of homelessness investment. Countywide total reflects all private and public dollars, both the county-administered dollars and funding going directly to providers, developers, and cities in the county. And today, you are viewing the distribution of funds in categories of interventions like shelter and interim housing, permanent housing, outreach, without capital development. And we did that intentionally because we had some large capital development infusions with low-income housing tax credits this year that tended to change the chart. And I think that so much of our discussion, right, is talking about these other interventions. So I did want to clarify that the countywide data is without a significant amount of capital development from residents at Depot Street and other CARES-funded initiatives. The county of Santa Barbara pie chart values reflects the funds that flow through the county budget to providers or to assist clients experiencing homelessness. And again, you're seeing the distribution of funds without capital development of $19,853,480. And this projects that about $5 million is in the coronavirus relief funds that will actually be expended this year without the capital investments, and about $5 million in state one-time investments projected to be expended here. So shelter and interim housing are the largest investments in both charts. And while the overall amount of funds has been growing, there's been little to no growth in stable, ongoing, or predictable sources to address permanent solutions. Nearly all of the funding is heavily scripted by use and program requirements, and some of the funding sources are awarded to the Continuum of Care but passed through the county as Community Services serves as the administrative entity for the Continuum of Care. Other sources are mandated by funders to be allocated in partnership with the Continuum of Care. With the money that's already been allocated and contracted, less than 5% of the funding is discretionary. And that's primarily a small amount of county general funds that are currently used for emergency shelter support. The county and the Continuum of Care have allocated $2.4 million to the development and operation of a new shelter navigation center in South County. The number of beds and location are still being considered, but I wanted to clarify that emergency shelters are navigation centers when they pair a bed with services and links to permanent housing. PATH and Good Samaritan are current local examples of an emergency shelter that would truly be operating as navigation centers. And some funding sources now use these words interchangeably. So when we're hearing navigation centers, sometimes we think it's something new, but it is an emergency shelter with those robust services. We can best maximize dollars dedicated to homelessness when we reserve funding for outreach, shelter, housing, and housing stabilization services whenever possible. Homelessness funding can be braided with mental health funding, criminal justice funding, and Medi-Cal to serve distinct subpopulations. The homeless system of care is the much smaller system, and it's critical that we try not to fund upstream systems with the limited funding dedicated to homelessness. All right. There was a lot there. I can go on to Slide Seven unless there's any questions on this slide.
No, I think.
I have a question, Mr. Drew.
Yeah, let's go ahead and ask that question, but I think we want to try to get to the end of this portion of the presentation, then we'll go back through these slides. But at this point, Supervisor Williams, please proceed.
Just going back to Slide, I think Four it was, which is the stats on sheltered and unsheltered. You know, we've seen and we've encouraged you, and you guys have successfully opened two and a half new facilities in the last year. So how is the capacity of beds going down in the last year? What facilities are terminating?
Yeah, so Supervisor, Supervisor Williams through the chair. We're really seeing, right, that those year-round shelter were so impacted by capacity from either outbreaks or the need for physical distancing that their capacity was reduced so much that even though we were attempting through temporary emergency shelter, right, to close that gap, it did not occur, at least on January 27. Most of our shelters were at reduced capacity throughout most of December and January. Some continue to be at severely reduced capacity, not accepting new guests. So even though we absolutely have been able to raise the temporary emergency shelters, we have not been able to keep pace with the loss of our normal shelter beds, which we certainly hope post-pandemic will come back online to those capacities. But we all know that I think congregate shelter will be viewed differently in the future.
Well, it seems to me that if we're not sure that they're going to come back, we need to make sure that they're going to come back. I mean, I don't think we should be letting folks off the hook. You know, otherwise, we open up potentially hundreds of new beds while nonprofits close hundreds of beds, and no progress is made.
I agree. It's critical for us to sustain shelter capacity.
Right. Thank you Supervisor Williams. I think what we're going to try to do is hit Slide Eight, Nine, Ten, and Eleven, then open up for questions among other board members. So Ms. Albers, are you done with your section there?
No, I think I'm on Slide Seven.
I think we just finished. Yep, sorry. Please proceed.
The slide shares, this slide shares some of the initial impact of the one-time investments by new state and COVID-related funding to address homelessness. This includes the Homeless Emergency Aid Program, the Homeless Housing Assistance and Prevention Program, and some of the coronavirus relief funds. Some projects funded by the one-time investments were either just contracted by your board in early February or are still ramping up. One-time investments have resulted in 585 permanent housing placements. Many of these placements are in private market units with short-term or long-term rent subsidies. placements also include assistance with move-ins into projects like Gardens on Hope in Santa Barbara and the Residence at Depot Street in Santa Maria, while those projects are not part of the funding mentioned. There are 55 new permanent housing units funded by the one-time state funding sources mentioned that have recently been completed or nearing completion. 18 units have been occupied so far, and additional units are still in the pre-development phase. Heath House in downtown Santa Barbara opened this week, which is a partnership with People Self-Help Housing, the City of Santa Barbara Behavioral Wellness, and the Housing Authority of the City in Santa Barbara, and it will serve seven formerly homeless women in this permanent supportive housing. Over 20,000 shelter bed nights have been provided through Roomkey, Veteran Noncongregates Shelter Initiatives, and the Shelter at Santa Maria High School. Roomkey South and the COVID-19 unit continue to offer a place for isolation and quarantine for persons that are COVID-positive or at increased risk of medical complications from COVID-19. Our medically fragile seniors are served at Roomkey South, and we've transitioned over 70 of our guests into permanent housing in the first 10 months of operation. Transitions to housing are ongoing, and we had a veteran that was part of the Isla Vista encampment move into housing last week. Even as funding has increased, there are still 1,124 persons in the coordinated entry system that are actively working with a provider and have been prioritized for a housing intervention. This includes 449 persons experiencing chronic homelessness. Slide Eight. So are reliable resources coming? We don't know for sure yet. We do know that the funding sources before you, the Governor's Proposed Budget, Assembly Bill 71, and a federal legislation being proposed by Senator Feinstein all propose to give us more ongoing sources for services and housing. So there is hope, but none of these funding sources have been passed by the relevant legislative body. Quickly to Slide Nine. At the onset of California's stay-at-home order, a task force assembled to address pressing issues related to homelessness and meet these four objectives: to prevent and mitigate COVID-19 impacts for persons who remain unsheltered through support centers, outreach, re-establishing access to showers, device charging, food, and hygiene supplies, to establish noncongregates sheltering for persons at high risk of COVID-19 complications and persons with or exposed to COVID-19, and then to sustain shelter capacity, which we've talked about quite a bit already, and enhance homelessness prevention and housing activities through increased funding for rental assistance and supportive services. The task force continues to meet biweekly, and much has been accomplished in each of these objectives. Slide 10. We've been asked several times over the last few months, really, what have we learned from some of the surge funding and especially the COVID-19 pandemic? And so I attempt here to give kind of a brief summary of things that I think have really stood out during the response and the surge in funding. Shelter expansion must be matched with housing resources, including supportive services. This truly does wind up being sort of the secret sauce of, whether it's street outreach or shelter, that when we have the housing resources to move someone forward, we're much more successful. Maintaining or growing service provider staffing capacity has been challenging. Posted jobs have gone unfilled or rapid turnover has occurred when providers are hiring. Outbreaks and distancing measures have significantly impacted congregate shelter capacity. Outbreaks and distancing measures have significantly impacted congregate shelter capacity, as we mentioned, and it is often taking multiple sources braided together to result in a single housing placement. And last, I think we're really seeing and anticipate this continuing, that the funding application and expenditure deadlines really make it critical to have impactful projects ready to launch. We are often only given mere weeks to birth even a permanent project. So it's been very challenging to keep up with the pace of the applications. And my last slide, slide eleven, going to transition a little bit to the encampment response, and then be moving on to my colleagues in other departments. Responding to encampments has been increasingly challenging, and the conditions people are living in are stressing, as mentioned by Chair Nelson. The Center for Disease Control and Prevention and California Department of Public Health released considerations for encampments early in the pandemic. Guidance encouraged communities to allow persons unsheltered or in encampments to remain where they are. And other legal considerations will be covered by Mr. Gazoni in a few moments. Through one-time funding, there have been investments in street outreach through coronavirus relief, emergency solutions grant, and the homeless emergency aid program funding. Organizations funded for outreach include Home for Good, Behavioral Wellness, Fighting Back Santa Maria Valley, the City of Santa Barbara, New Beginnings Council Center, and others. The county contracted with CityNet in the fall of 2020 specifically to target encampments that are directly adjacent to homes, impacting water quality, or causing other more extreme risks such as fire. On the slide, you'll see the percentage of successful exits, both temporary and permanent housing placements from street outreach, has increased from nine to fifty-seven percent in the last four years while serving an additional two hundred people. So I was asked what changed. Consistent engagement by trained providers, emphasizing case management in the field, focusing on a housing and services plan for each individual, and employing best practices like progressive engagement and more accountability in the coordinated entry system for housing navigation. We also engaged in trying to make sure that there was access to sanitation services when possible, which is another recommendation of the Center for Disease Control. Restrooms, handwashing stations, and debris removal have all been deployed. Outreach providers are also testing a mapping mobile application software that is used by the fire department to increase efficiency in locating persons. And departments are at the table weekly to coordinate outreach efforts with community-based organizations, both with community-based organizations and internally. Rapidly growing encampments in Isla Vista within the community parks resulted in a new strategy being deployed. Twenty pallet structures are providing temporary shelter to persons formerly inhabiting Anasquio Park operated by Good Samaritan Shelter. Good Sam has been able to assist residents getting into substance abuse programs. One resident has been able to successfully move into a transitional program for women, and many of the guests are gathering the vital documents to establish eligibility for permanent housing. And some of the guests have even been able to have much-needed surgical procedures because of their access to shelter. So with that, I'll conclude my comments, and I believe we'll move to Chief Hartwig.
All right. Before we get to Chief Hartwig, I want to open up. Ms. Albers, please hang on. We want to have a few questions from my colleagues. Start off with Supervisor Hart.
Thank you, Chair Nelson. I have a question on slide six and seven and eight and eleven, so let's start with slide six. I see that only one percent of the funding on these charts, both county-wide and the county of Santa Barbara, is for homelessness prevention, but I don't think that includes the CDBG money that we use this year for rental assistance, and it certainly doesn't include the state and federal funding that we have now coming to meet that need. And I think that is a really significant piece of this story. And so, you know, for future reference and inclusion in this discussion going forward, it'd be great to include that. That would dramatically change these charts, including all that funding. And then slide number seven. There are five hundred and eighty-five new permanent housing units, excuse me, permanent housing placements that have occurred. Can you talk more about who those folks are? You know, what are the demographics of those people? Where were they placed? And obviously, it's hard to do that, you know, here in this context, but I think it would be helpful for us to understand with a lot more detail about who those folks are, because these are success stories. This is the finish line of what we're trying to accomplish with this entire system. So understanding why, you know, we've been successful with these people, what is it that, you know, have we provided five hundred and eighty-five new units of housing that is a unique one-time opportunity? What is it that's making that happen? It also relates, I think, to slide eleven, I think, that shows the dramatic increase over the last four years, you know, from nine percent of successful exits to fifty-seven percent of successful exits, you know, and two hundred and forty-six placements to four hundred and thirty-seven. That's the story that I'd love to know more about, and just could you help us understand that?
Yes, Chair Nelson, or Chair Hart, I'm sorry, Supervisor Hart through the chair. You know, the five hundred in permanent housing placements are really a combination of the system and what these new one-time investments were able to add, whether it was covering the services to be able to utilize a housing choice voucher with one of our local housing authorities. As I mentioned, it could have been the security deposit and services in order to transition to someone with the larger new projects that opened, like Gardens on Hope in Santa Barbara and Residence at Depot Street in Santa Maria. But primarily, these are the rapid rehousing interventions. So that's the short-term and medium-term assistance that we use to transition someone back into housing and largely into private market units. So this can be a rapid rehousing, you know, many of these were rapid rehousing paired with a voucher for long-term affordability, and the rapid rehousing is the services component and the placement piece. But quite a few of them, too, would do just that rapid rehousing where they're getting the short and medium-term assistance to transition back into the private rental market. And so the who is pretty diverse, actually. So we really used rapid rehousing at Room Key South for our medically fragile seniors, but paired it again with additional supportive services dollars. And at Good Samaritan, they have, you know, significant rapid rehousing dollars flowing to serve their families, which resulted in increased shelter flow. So it really is all of these, this is, you know, largely the homeless emergency aid program that you're seeing here, because that's the program that's been in process for over a year now. Those dollars really getting to the community and resulting now months into that program in those permanent housing placements. So it is very exciting, so I really appreciate you noting that. And I think that, again, that homeless emergency aid program is also sort of the secret sauce for the street outreach efforts, right? We were able to use those HEAP dollars to make street outreach more robust, to where it could move to this caseload-oriented model rather than sort of meeting someone and then just completing an assessment, and maybe there not being that consistent contact through a housing plan and placement. So I think we're really, really excited for some progress. I think we're concerned, right, that all of the funding that I've talked about is one-time. The homeless emergency aid program will end already on June thirty of this year, and while we have some emergency solutions funding to extend one more year for a couple of those providers, without additional resources, you know, some of those outreach efforts will end, and some of these permanent housing efforts.
Well, thank you, Ms. Albers. That's really helpful, and I think that this portion of the report deserves more space and time and description, because, you know, the money that you're speaking about generally, you know, it'd be really helpful to know specifically, you know, which of those programs was most effective, what is the scale of the investment that has been required to make this kind of progress? Because in looking ahead, you know, to continue that success, we need to make sure that we're scaling the resources appropriately, you know, and the expectations of what we're going to be able to accomplish with the resources going forward. And I note on slide eleven that you referenced the new proposed funding at the federal level, the Fighting Homelessness through Services and Housing Act, a billion-dollar investment at the federal level. And that's always great and wonderful to hear, only a good thing if it were to pass. But to put it in perspective, that probably translates into a million dollars for our county. A billion at the federal level, you know, rolls down to a million in Santa Barbara County, and I suspect, you know, that is a tiny portion of all the funding that you have just talked about, being necessary to make the progress to get from nine percent successful exits to fifty-seven percent, and that's sobering and a challenge for us.
Supervisor Hart through the chair. I was just going to comment that I think if AB seventy-one were to pass, which, like you mentioned, we're not there, it would be a much more significant inflow than the federal legislation mentioned.
Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Hart and Ms. Albers. Next is Supervisor Lavignino.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, Cam, I want to focus on, I appreciate all of the presentation, but I want to focus mostly on slide eleven. Can you just kind of walk me through what a, when you approach an encampment, just kind of give me a feel of how, why, I mean, fifty-seven percent's awesome. What about the other forty-three percent? What happens? Do we just, I'm really curious about, because I got to be honest with you, that's probably the biggest impact I'm hearing from residents right now is, and maybe it's because of the fact that, you know, we've got less space in the shelters, more and more people are finding, you know, these encampments right next to either where they live or where they recreate, and, you know, it's much more visible. And I'm kind of curious of, you know, if you could just break down how that works and what doesn't work.
Yeah. Supervisor Lavignino through the chair. The, you know, the street outreach efforts, I'll comment briefly on the forty-three percent. So sort of the good news of that is that most of those individuals are still enrolled, right, that they're still part of street outreach programs, attempting to get them to the point of a positive exit, whether it's to a temporary or a permanent destination. So I think that's the positive news. As far as what happens when we're approaching the encampment, I think because CityNet was funded with, through the City of Santa Barbara's homeless emergency aid program, they actually did quite a comprehensive look of sort of what it was taking. And it was about fourteen, they averaged fourteen visits or contacts prior to even enrolling someone officially as a client. So while not all folks are that difficult to reach, we certainly know that it's taking, you know, it's really taking consistent interaction. I think what we're hearing from providers is even when they're offering these new rapid rehousing and permanent supportive housing resources we have, people are resistant, they don't believe it. They feel very failed by the system multiple times, or, you know, their own failures in the systems. And so it really is taking a trust building, like I kind of talked about that progressive engagement. So starting with, you know, hey, things are looking pretty rough. Do you realize you're on a creek bed? And that has impact, you know, how can we help you get your stuff, you know, away from the water? Those type of conversations to eventually like, hey, I'd really like to help you, you know, move forward with placement. So sometimes that can happen in one meeting, but most often, right, it takes multiple visits to build enough trust.
I'm sorry, but maybe this is more for Mr. Gazoni, but, you know, during those fourteen visits, the neighbors are still impacted, and they don't want to hear that it's taken us fourteen times to go out there and meet with these individuals. So I guess, you know, every good program has a carrot and a stick, and we're hearing a lot about the carrot. And I don't want to focus primarily on the stick, but, you know, what other options do we have? What other tools are in the chest, tool chest?
Supervisor Lavignino through the chair. I think we, you know, with encampments, it will have to likely be because of the legal considerations that we have those alternative locations to offer and, you know, meaningful offers of assistance, whether it's into, you know, Room Key project, as that at least goes for the next few months if someone is elderly and medically fragile, or finding an alternative location hopefully as our congregate shelters, right, regain some of their capacity. But we are in a very difficult position unless we have an offer of a place for them to go. And as we saw, you know, it's a dramatic drop in our shelter capacity right now.
Okay. So, and I'm sure Chair Nelson, I spoke with him previous to this, but I think it's really important for the public to hear more about that, you know, what our constraints are and what we plan on doing with that as we move through the meeting.
All right. Thank you Supervisor Lavignino. Supervisor Hartman or Williams?
Well, I guess the question is, it seems that one of the reasons why last year's numbers were good was increased outreach. And then one of the reasons, the other reason was because, at least in Isla Vista, there was a stick as well as the carrot. I mean, is that a true statement of those statistics?
I don't think that we're seeing in the street outreach numbers the effects of the Isla Vista interventions yet. I think that, you know, in our system, even at Room Key, where we had, you know, an actively engaged guest with us twenty-four hours a day, it was taking us ninety to a hundred and twenty days to house. So we're not really seeing impacts yet of the Isla Vista intervention, and it'll be interesting to see how many permanent housing placements result from there. But I think we're absolutely seeing, right, that when we have that consistent engagement, that there's a worker, whether they're, you know, oftentimes, right, CityNet was moving into a sheltered environment, or another outreach was moving them into Room Key South, so that they did have them in a space where they could be found easier, certainly was happening. So, you know, it isn't that shelter wasn't part of some of these street outreach successes, right? It certainly was, but it's pairing the appropriate services with the housing resources and then building that trust to get someone there. So I think we don't, I think in the most of the exits you're seeing, I don't think we're, we were seeing any kind of stick.
And then, you know, this is a topic of discussion with members of the public. They see the, you know, the success of Isla Vista, and they go, well, okay, how come we can't get that? And I think it's important for us to let them know the ingredients we would need to, because they'll say, well, there's health and safety and fire issues, you know, say in Summerland or in Montecito or in other encampments. And the other ingredient that made Isla Vista possible, correct, is a site for temporary shelter, right? And so is that the missing ingredient in other areas for us to replicate the success of Isla Vista? Or is there another missing ingredient?
Supervisor William through the chair. Absolutely right. So I, you know, still kind of hats off, or I've done, I've raised a lot of shelters and programs in my career in different communities, and the support that we received in Isla Vista across, whether it was the Recreation and Parks District, the Community Services District, other stakeholders that said, yes, you know, we want to offer a solution, we're committed to solutions. And so even when the site was right at the top of the loop, it, people were willing and stood by that and are largely still very supportive of the project. And so it's, I think that's very different, right, when we've been trying to place in other areas of the county. It's been extremely difficult to cite and gain that kind of community support. So I think that's definitely part of it. And then, you know, uniquely, and I think this is really important, right, if we were to replicate the Isla Vista model, one of the reasons it could be raised as quickly as possible as it was, was because we were under a public health emergency, right? It was in response to the public health crisis. And so it allowed us to, you know, have waivers for some of the zoning restrictions, and because it's less than a hundred and eighty days, we were able to not be, have some of the building ordinances impacted. So there's actually, you know, kind of a lot of things that if we were to do this in a longer-term model, say if we want to do it for a year, that would be triggered. So we need that site, but we would also need to make sure that we have the right ordinance ordinances, et cetera, and, and changes potentially to the building code to make that type of project when we're talking about the pallet shelters work. So there's, and funding, of course.
Right.
So if we, if we had to, it's a million dollars for six months in Isla Vista. And, and so we, we'd want to make sure that, you know, depending on the length of the project, that we have that, that funding to do it.
Yep. Thank you. I think we're starting to stray into a little bit of the discussion that we're going to get into a little bit later. We've got quite a few slides, we're 11 through 40. I do have a clarifying question, Ms. Albers, for you. On slide number five, the children, do we know of, are those sheltered or unsheltered children? Do we, do we have a breakdown on that? Or maybe that's part of slide four, when we look at our unsheltered population? Are we identifying children in that unsheltered population?
Chair Nelson, I, I missed the beginning of the question.
Well, so my, my concern is about the kids here. So we have 768 children that we've served. I'm curious if those are sheltered or unsheltered children? If there's a, do we know, you know, do we have 700 kids on the street? I mean, what are, what are we looking at here? So.
We, we, Supervisor Nelson, we definitely do not have 768 children on the street. They are in our shelter system, they are being served at our Department of Social Services through their housing support program that serves Cal Works families experiencing homelessness. They are living in their vehicles. We do see that, you know, fairly common, but it wouldn't be a large percentage of, of that group. So yes, primarily sheltered or working with Department of Social Services or other agencies to re-enter housing. So you have main, you know, family providers like Good Samaritan, Transition House and others.
And that, so again, my big concern is, do we have any, are we seeing children in encampments? Is that an issue that we're having countywide at all? Are we seeing, I mean, I understand the cars or the RVs and that obviously is concerning, but again, I want to make sure that we're wrapping our arms around any kid that might potentially be in an unsafe situation. What, what does that look like?
Supervisor Nelson, so I believe we have encountered children in encampments this year. And so providers, you know, work diligently to try and, try and remedy those situations. I know in other communities I've worked in, there was an initiative called No Child Left Unsheltered. And, and it really did create a path where if a child was found unsheltered, that, you know, mountains could be moved quicker. But, but yeah, so it's, it's not common, but it is absolutely happening.
Okay. But again, I wanted to make sure that it was a much smaller number than 768. So it sounds like it's just, it's a handful, it's, you know, any of them, one is too many. But good, that's, that's helpful for me. So if I don't see any other questions from my colleagues, I want to go ahead and move into our next presentation. I believe that's by Chief Hartwig with the fire impacts and response.
Yes, good morning, Mr. Chair and members of the board. Can you hear me okay?
You can, Mark. Thank you, Chief.
Terrific. I, I wanted to get into a few things. I just have a couple of slides here, but really the focus of my, part of this presentation is to talk to you specifically about what the county fire department is seeing within its jurisdiction and then also update you on a ongoing effort, a recent effort with the county fire chiefs to address specifically fire and life safety issues. Wanted to start by just going over some of the statistics related to homelessness within the county. I, I think it's interesting to note that it didn't start in 2020, as mentioned by the chair earlier, and, and it won't end, it didn't end in 2020. One of the very first fires that I was alerted to two years ago in my tenure here was, was a fire that was starting at what appeared to be an encampment of some sort off of the 101. We started tracking those incidents though, last year, we created a tab in our, our patient care reporting system, our online reporting system. And, and we started tracking calls related to homelessness or transient folks without an address for both a fire and EMS or non-fire related calls. We tracked last year a total of, as you see in front of you, 448. A majority of those were for 911 calls for emergency medical care. We did have, however, and many of you are, all of you are aware of the, the more notable ones, but we did have more than three calls a month related to fire as well. And those calls typically were as a result of either warming or cooking. And those fire related calls are listed in front of you. We inspected 21 encampments. And what does that mean? We're not on a circuit to inspect encampments. We don't, they, they aren't safe generally and don't fall within the, a, a code, if you will, for occupancy. But at the request of jurisdictions that we serve and/or complaints from the community, we have gone into 21 encampments in 2020. And as Ms. Albers said, we chart those, share those with our partners and then have a good idea of where these encampments or gatherings are. On top of that, we do have regular inspections of the, the pallet house project and the safe sleeping area in the People's Park in Isla Vista. Those are ongoing and those are on top of the kind of spot inspections that we do based on reports from either our city or municipal partners or the public. I wanted to tell you specifically about what we're doing as a county fire chiefs group. As we embarked in tracking the, the, the activity within our jurisdiction, we realized that we were all dealing with the same issue. And in fact, some of the things, activities that we were undertaking as individual jurisdictions were having a unintended consequence for a neighboring jurisdiction. In other words, if we were to find an encampment, a, a fire and life safety hazard, and then in partnership with the municipal jurisdiction, whether that was a city or a park district, and they were to clean it up or they were to encourage people within that camp to move on, often they just moved on to the neighboring jurisdiction. And in an effort to come up with, put our fire prevention and life safety professionals together, our fire marshals essentially together, come up with not only, hey, what are the problems that you're facing? Are these common problems? They seem to be. And then do we have a set of common solutions that then we can individually take back to our policymakers and, and offer up to them as a way to work more closely together? And when I say more closely together, I mean from Santa Maria all the way down to Carpentaria, specifically the fire chiefs and fire prevention and fire marshals within those organizations. It really came down to upon analysis of our fire marshals and a presentation to the county fire chiefs group, really three distinct efforts. One was, as I'd mentioned earlier, the activities associated with these encampments. And that related everything from a report of an outside investigation, a smell of smoke, to a, a, a fire that had seemingly become out of control and then destroyed the camp and/or property around it. The other two issues were highlighted as, I would say, perhaps more COVID related, and, and that is the increase in the dispersed camping, dispersed camping within the forest. And maybe it's important for me to make a distinction between the forest and their jurisdiction and the fire district, the county fire district jurisdiction. Those are two layers on top of each other. The forest that has a responsibility and jurisdiction for natural resources. And then you have the fire district that has a responsibility for essentially the protection of people and property. And yet neither one of this, of us could make decisions related to the use of that land without the, the consent or work of each other. The dispersed camping practice, going off of the roadway within the forest has been going on for years and in fact is a very popular way for people to join, to enjoy the outdoors. It manifests itself specifically along the pass areas and, and along the Camino Cielo and up off of Gibraltar in people pulling off the roadway, off of the roadway, it, within the forest and then spending the night, often within their cars, sometimes with tents and sleeping bags, but often within their cars. And that has led to a lot of complaints from our communities in the past, our past communities. And then the other issue that was addressed was the trailhead parking. And I really call it ingress and egress or access issues. Egress is, as a larger or as large a concern of ours, and that is, are, 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 are communities or neighbors able to evacuate from their communities, whether it's along the beach and the coastal access where we seem to get a lot of parking or parking issues, access issues or up off of the trailheads. And so we formed three, the fire chiefs decided to accept the report and form three subgroups. Those subgroups now have met twice and in fact just recently came back with a list of recommendations. The fire marshals or the subgroups are going to formulate a report and submit that to the county chiefs and we are going to take that up at our next meeting this month, later this month. I do think it's important to note that we have one small piece of this or a piece of it, and, and we're working closely with our county partners, the homeless task force, as well as another, I think synergy that has developed out of this effort for, from county chiefs headed by Chief Fish, Greg Fish out of Carpentaria, the county chief's president, is a lot of these community groups and interested parties coming together and say, hey, did you think of this? Or did you know about this happening here? We, we think some of the options or, or solutions are fairly simple and, and other ones perhaps related to some of the encampments are much more complex and riddled with potentially legal implications. That's all I have, Mr. Chair, and I'm open and we'll stay around for any questions or comments.
Thank you, Chief Hartwig. Let me back to the board with some questions or comments. It looks like Supervisor Lavignino may have a question.
Yeah, and Chief, I don't know if this is for you, it's just general encampment question again, and that is, but I know there has been one brush fire associated with it. With, a lot of these encampments are also on Caltrans property. And I just want to know, in our county, you know, do we, have we reached out to Caltrans? What's their policy? What's their position? From what I understand from some residents that I've dealt with, is that they try to cal, talk to Caltrans and they're, you know, even though they've taken fences down, you know, they're, they're right along the side of the road, that there just doesn't seem to be much Caltrans response. And just curious how, how we deal with that.
That's a, I think, a great observation. Two of the most popular encampment locations are the Union Pacific right of way and the Caltrans right of ways. And what we've noticed is that the cleanup efforts that happen along there are occasional. Usually they're at the request or with some pressure, but there isn't any patrolling of those right of ways. So I, I, I shared with my team, literally the last cleanup that I witnessed along the 101 freeway, you, you could see folks that had property, taking the property that they didn't want thrown into the Caltrans dumpster and walking it back, further back from where the, the cleanup effort just came from. It, it, it doesn't do much from what we can tell to, to discourage the homeless encampments. What it does though, and I do have to say it's, it's helpful and beneficial, is it takes much of the accumulated property and, and take care of that. And so that, the, the camps that start over again in those right of ways start with much less property to, to burn, if you will, or to create the, the fire hazard.
And I guess maybe that's, that's a question also that I'd like Mr. Gazoni to, to maybe answer later on, is just what are our, I mean, you know, we sent a letter to Caltrans, what are their legal responsibilities? What are our legal responsibilities? What are we allowed to do? Like to get all that later.
Supervisor Lavignino, so we, we got a couple more slides. Our next special issue will be multidisciplinary team update. And then we actually have Mr. Gazoni has a slide and I think we all probably have some questions for him at that point as well. So Supervisor Williams, did I see that you looking for comment? Okay.
Not yet.
All right. Well, again, Chief Hartwig, thank you for everything you and, and your partners are doing. We appreciate it here at the county and it's, should be obvious to everybody, it's going to take all of us moving in the same direction to, to move the needle here. So thank you. So that, with that, let's move along to slide 15, and that's the special issues, multidisciplinary team update with behavioral wellness director, Dr. Leghorn, and public defender Tracy Makuga.
Good morning. Can you hear me?
You can, thank you.
Great. I'm calling in on my phone and I actually can't see the slides unless they're projected up there. So be happy to walk you through them once I, once I see them. Okay, let's, I'm going to be speaking very briefly about our multidisciplinary team, its, its focus and what it's accomplished. And Tracy will also be talking about the staff that work in conjunction with the project. Next slide, please. So essentially, our multidisciplinary team was originally intended to augment the homeless outreach efforts that we had established with some of our other MHSA funding in South County, to augment and expand that existing model beyond what we had had in South County. The funding allowed us to create a full-time and two part-time caseworkers, two practitioners, and add additional psychiatry in both North and South County and purchase additional emergency shelter beds in North County. The multidisciplinary team provides intensive outreach, support services and link to needed resources in order to move people from homeless circumstances into eventually supportive permanent housing. We take a low barrier approach as is required by some of the more recent state funding. And our goal is to acquire long-term housing for these individuals and on that path, ensure that they have their documents ready and any legal or other barriers removed. Next slide. We've been doing outreach in a variety of locations. I've listed some of them here, specifically pallet houses in Isla Vista, a number of locations along the beach and in Montecito, Belida Beach, in the non-congregate shelters, along the Milpas Street corridor, encampments in the city of Lompoc and in the Lompoc River Bed, as well as homeless who are living in their cars or on the streets in Santa Maria, and various sites that host the shower trailers across locations in Santa Maria. Next slide. We've provided outreach to more than 90 unsheltered homeless individuals. We've gotten 29 of those into shelter environments. And I put what the annual goals are according to different funding streams. We've also placed 16 individuals in permanent housing and eight of those entered our depot street units that we've been working to build in Santa Maria, about over a three-year period. street units that we've been working to build in Santa Maria about over a three-year period. I believe we started that project, so while predating COVID. And then our B Street Studios in Lompoc just opened with about half the clients moving in at the end of December and the remainder in at the beginning of February, and four of those were clients that were specifically outreach by these teams. We've also helped about 43 individuals receive benefits, which aids in stability and getting clients into longer-term, stable environments. So that's my very brief overview of the work this team has been doing, and I'm going to turn my time over to Tracy.
Right. Thank you, Dr. Glagorn.
Thank you, Dr. Glagorn. Chair Nelson, members of the board, I was asked specifically to provide you with an overview of the multidisciplinary team, the MDT as we'll refer to it. This approach to serve the chronically homeless should be familiar to you, because MDT or interdisciplinary approaches is the cornerstone of holistic defense and is certainly represented by our Community Defender Division. But using Ms. Albers' words, this approach is one of the ingredients of the secret sauce. The MDT funded by the HEAP grant was established to address the most complex subset of our homeless population, the hardest to reach and the most intensive to serve. These individuals have been referred to as high utilizers. Each of these individuals have unique stories, and a one-size-fits-all model simply does not work, but rather is a recipe for failure. The hard-to-serve chronically homeless, as you are well aware, more often than not suffer from severe mental illness, a laundry list of comorbidities, a history of victimization, and often a history of criminalization that too often is seen as a solution, but instead worsens the circumstances and erects significant barriers to stabilization. Any one of these challenges alone would be difficult to address, but a strong cocktail of all of these challenges combined is why an MDT approach is a critical part of the solution. In addition, as Ms. Albers pointed out, through reliable and sustainable funding, more permanent supportive housing, and establishing temporary shelter to serve high-need individuals, not just the low-barrier sheltering we currently have. The best way to explain the MDT approach and our success is reported by Dr. Glagorn and Ms. Albers, is by answering a question that is often posed to me, which is why would a chronically homeless person turn down a shelter bed or a treatment program if available? The question itself is rooted in the memorable but aspirational belief found in one of my favorite movies, Field of Dreams. If you build it, they will come. But this is not so simple or so true when working with the hardest-to-reach in our homeless community. They need, as pointed out by Chair Nelson in his opening remarks, intensive case management built on trust, trust that only comes with time and consistency, a 360 viewpoint and problem solvers across multiple disciplines, sitting at tables and in the field, who think outside the box, use common sense, and frankly, act less like bureaucrats explaining why something can't be done, but instead roll up their sleeves and simply get it done. Vanda Epstein, a member of the Public Defender's Community Defender Division, and who is specifically assigned to the MDT team, would tell you it takes an agile and creative army to solve these problems, including community members. And although my office is only funded through the grant for her position, the other members of my team are key to the success, as is countless other heroes in various departments, who solve one problem at a time, one person at a time. In short, a holistic and personalized approach. As way of example, and again, building on what Ms. Albers said in response to your question, to demonstrate how labor-intensive but rewarding this model is, three individuals who are now permanently housed with two more close to permanent housing, plus 17 individuals who are now in temporary housing, it took Ms. Epstein alone, a documented 400 instances of contact, in short, hundreds of hours of direct hands-on service, guidance and support to these hard-to-reach clients, all done in the middle of a pandemic, to achieve these 22 remarkable, successful outcomes. These success stories with more to come are a direct result of an MDT approach, which requires countless hours in the field, with clients building trust and breaking down system barriers. Unfortunately, without investing in these teams as a permanent feature of our plan, in addition to the brick and mortar projects that are needed, we will not succeed in solving this problem. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Mokuga. To my colleagues, before we head to the next one, I think that Dr. Glagorn and Public Defender Mokuga are both going to need to stick around for some of this discussion moving forward. And, you know, I want to stay on task, but I also, as chair, I'm going to just brag on Tracy's work in this field, in the Lompoc Riverbed Cleanup and Triage Center. She personally was down there with her truck in the riverbed, helping some of our most vulnerable transition to the next stage. And when we had our triage center for all 30 days, her team was there, and it's really because of them that I'm a true believer today in this, and looking forward to continue to work with them. So Supervisor Hart.
You may not know she has a forklift license, so she helped with the Palat Houses.
No surprise. Supervisor Hart?
Well, I want to thank Public Defender Mokuga as well, and Dr. Glagorn at Behavior Wellness for their multidisciplinary team. And I absolutely agree that the one person at a time building trust to break down barriers to get people in housing is the answer. But I'm curious if there is anything being done amongst all the various different outreach efforts in the county. You know, the city of Santa Barbara has a number of outreach programs. We have our county programs. Is there any work being done to compare notes and look at best practices and look at, you know, the success rate of different strategies to share best practices and make sure that we're doing the best across all the jurisdictions with this approach?
Well, I'm not sure. This is Tracy. First of all, thank you, Chair Nelson, and unfortunately, I would have helped at the Palat Center, but they didn't need me, so thank you, Chair Hartman. With that said, data does matter, and I do believe that we could be better communicating with all these groups. I think we're still a little siloed. Dr. Glagorn, I would appreciate her commenting on this because she's more connected, but I think we can communicate better.
Yeah, and before Dr. Glagorn goes, I understood previously HIPAA issues were some of the issues that were a struggle, at least when we were dealing with this, and maybe Dr. Glagorn can comment on that as well as part of that, answering that question.
Thank you for the question, members of the board. On the first slide where I was talking about building on the existing model, that was really referencing the model that was established very early on and that I joined in on with the Milpus Street project downtown, and that involved frequent meetings of engaged stakeholders to problem-solve case-by-case the individuals with the highest impact on the community. And that is the model that we moved forward on with our work with Behavior Wellness, with longtime homeless staff like Sarah Grasso, Luis Alvarado is currently still engaged, and John Masuda is now our homeless outreach supervisor. So those strategies, which proved very, very effective in really reducing the highly-impacted visible homeless, both in downtown Santa Barbara and on Milpus, are what we've been trying to expand throughout other areas of the county. And those are also, I'll say, based on research that I conducted back in San Francisco that showed you really have to have consistent outreach with the same people, the same workers, so that that level of trust builds up. And it can take sometimes more than 25 contacts for someone to trust you and work with you and take steps to change their circumstances. That doesn't get to the issue that was brought up earlier about forcing someone to do something versus trying to engage them, because what we found really is if you try to force someone, what happens is they move along and you have to to another location and you have to restart the efforts. So, yes, there's been a lot of communication about what it takes to really problem-solve these situations, but we have not gotten together to, you know, share all of the data that's been compiled through the last year or so. I think any kind of community meetings have been a little more difficult during COVID, although there are efforts through Santa Barbara City to have kind of a collective discussion of homeless issues, and my staff and myself do sit on those meetings, as well as Kim Albers, for what they're calling SB Act, which, you know, there are about three different things named SB Act, so I don't want to confuse people. But there is a sharing of ideas, and there are, you know, more opportunities, I think, for us to look at the impact of this, but there are so many moving parts. I think the majority of data gets compiled and reproduced in reports by HCD.
Well, I just want to make sure that that is done well, because I think as Public Defender Mokuga mentioned, there are silos, and there needs to be more collaboration. And, you know, not everybody is as talented at this work as other people are, it's just a simple fact, and we need to identify the folks who are, you know, really good and have what they're doing replicated by others. And this is so important, you know, we can't just have people doing their own thing and investing lots and lots of money in things that could be more effective. And I've seen it directly, even within county departments, you know, the success and not success, and I want to see more success and less bureaucracy. So getting that communication established firmly, clearly, you know, and reporting about it and having metrics to measure it is as important as, you know, the passion involved in this work.
All right. Supervisor Hart, next up, we actually have County Council, Mike Gazoni, with a slide and a little discussion. I think some of us will have some questions about how this all feeds into what our options are legally.
Chair and supervisors, whenever we're talking about the legal framework on something, we're really looking at a point in time, which unfortunately is generally a rearview mirror, and I think this one is particularly a rearview mirror. The slide is captioned Martin versus Boise, and although the Ninth Circuit ruled on this in 2019, the facts on which the Ninth Circuit ruled actually came into the District Court system in 2009. So if we look just at this case, we're really going back to 2009 for our view of what's coming down the road. So it provides some help, but what we generally do on these is rather than drive, you know, focusing on the rearview mirror, we try to look at other cases, more recent cases, developing cases. And I think in the context that we're talking about today, we're not really talking about just homelessness, we're talking about homelessness in the time of COVID. And I think that's a particular gloss. And on this slide, we listed Martin versus City of Boise, which is the Ninth Circuit case. Then we have two District Court cases, a little bit more recent facts, both more recent decisions, but more pointedly, more recent facts. And I want to come back to that a couple times, that the Boise case is a set of facts from 2009, so they're of limited use. The holding is of some use, but we're dealing with facts that are more than a decade old. Both the Grants Pass case and the City of Los Angeles cases, although not binding on us, are facts that are only a year old and much more helpful to us. And we also have interim guidance from the Center for Disease Control that provides, you know, a health-based gloss on what we're supposed to be doing. So I think when we look at these quickly, if we were looking, as some jurisdictions have done, just at Martin versus City of Boise, you might think that the only prohibition is against criminal sanctions for sleeping outdoors when no alternate shelter is available. I think, fast-forwarding more than a decade to the Grants Pass case and the City of Los Angeles case, we have a better definition of what qualifies as an alternative shelter, as well as the very significant point that while Boise dealt with a criminal sanction ordinance, the Grants Pass case did with civil violations also, so a broader scope on that. And Los Angeles Alliance was really not a penalty-based sanction at all, but telling the City of Los Angeles that they needed to do more for their homeless who were sleeping under freeways. I think that what we take from all of this, stirring in the interim guidance from the Center of Disease Control, is that in order to force people to move on, and I think Dr. Glagorn's words were important, there's encouraging and there's forcing. But if we were looking at forcing, then there must be qualifying alternative shelter available. And both Grants Pass and Los Angeles, you know, found out what isn't an alternative shelter. So an alternative shelter, it's not just a sobering center, it needs to have beds. In the time of COVID, it needs to have adequate social distancing, quarantine, hygiene, and adequate staff for medical and security needs. Going to Supervisor Lavigno's question, all of this means that the county and its partners still have some options available. The Grants Pass decision, although a District Court, I think, was illuminating by carving out an area and saying that while a jurisdiction cannot sanction homelessness, it can still enforce against some of the problems that society faces with homelessness, such as public urination, public defecation, littering, illicit substances, harassment or violence. And that sounds good, and then you're left with, then what? So if we cite or arrest for violations there, is our criminal justice system prepared to receive these people, and what are we going to do with them? Especially going back to my context, we're dealing with homelessness in the time of COVID, so taking people into the jail system is not going to be a great long-term solution either. So that's the overall view of this, and our staff spent a fair amount of time trying not to fall into the trap of looking at just the Boise case, which again tells us what people might have wondered in 2009, but not what they should be wondering about in 2021.
Mr. Gazoni, forcing, is that just another term for enforcing laws in regards to camping and trespass?
Well, I think that, you know, one of the things that we deal with in our office, we also represent the Sheriff's Office on some of the things like restraint hearings. And one of the things that I emphasize with our attorneys is that in dealing with people, we first must wonder, do they have the same concern about going to jail that I do? And the answer is sometimes not. So if we're dealing with people who are penniless and homeless, and we either find them or arrest them, I mean, is that really a deterrent? So that's part of my response to forcing people. I think, again, Dr. Glagorn, and I did not, you know, coordinate on this point, but I think her idea of encouraging, telling people their options, and she can speak to the long-term efficacy of that, but I think of enforcing or forcing as being frequently a short term. We might solve the problem for a day or two and move people into a jail with a bed cap, and they're going to be released pretty quickly if they get there at all.
My other colleagues, I'm sure there's some other questions here potentially. Supervisor Lavigno, please.
So, you know, I think that's a pretty sobering response, and, you know, maybe that's why I'm getting many more phone calls now about encampments popping up in town. Even talking to, you know, a member of law enforcement, they were, you know, feeling like pretty much their hands were tied. You know, and I don't want to come off as the callous, uncaring individual. I mean, I've spent the last 10 years, I think, once I got on the Board of Supervisors, I've been immersed in homeless issues, trying to solve the problem. And I think what Tracy and what others have said is absolutely true. I remember something Jeff Shaper told me was you can't solve somebody's homeless issue until you know their name. The problem is, if it takes 400 hours or 300 hours to convince somebody to get help, even 200 hours, and we've got 1,600 people, it does not, the math doesn't work, right? So what we know works with the tools that we have right now, it's not going to happen. Because when you do finally convince that person that they need to find help and we can move them into that, you turn around and there's two more there. can move them into that, you turn around and there's two more there. And so, you know, this is a large societal issue. And I think one of the things I want to take away from today is explaining to people all the things that we're doing, but I don't want to overpromise because I think that's the biggest mistake that people have heard, right? That the county is always talking about a 10-year plan and homelessness, or we're going to house every homeless individual. Reality is, what I see from what works is a long, plodding, hand-holding way to get somebody to where they finally make that decision. And when you do that, like I said, you turn around and there's two more. I'm not saying that that's not the way we should continue to do it. It's just people have to realize that, you know, there's limited resources. And right now, I don't think we have the magic bullet on how to fix it.
All right. Thank you, Supervisor Lavenino. Supervisor Williams, did you?
No questions at the time.
All right. So I think our next slide is recommended actions. But I think that's just kicking us off for our next part of the presentation, which is going to be, can we, Dinah there? Yeah, Ms. Lockhart.
Good morning, Chair Nelson and members of the Board of Supervisors. So yes, Slide 21 is, the recommended actions are that the Board of Supervisors receive a presentation on homelessness in Santa Barbara County, including a staff report on the Phase Two Action Plan to address homelessness, to adopt the action plan, and to provide direction for the implementation work plan priorities and other direction as appropriate. Next slide. So the Phase One Community Action Plan to Address Homelessness was adopted by the Board of Supervisors in June of 2019. This report identified five key strategies that are carried into the Phase Two Plan to bring continuity to implementation efforts. The Phase One Plan allowed the county to be eligible for funding opportunities such as the No Place Like Home and the recent Homeless Housing Assistance and Prevention Program, or HAP. Next slide. So how did we get here? The county contracted with LaSar Development Consultants. They had two multi-day visits in late 2019 where they heard from over 400 community members and numerous stakeholders. The process included collecting data and analyzing funding, conducting a GAPS analysis, and presenting to the elected leaders forum and city working groups. Because of staff needing to respond to the coronavirus crisis in 2020, progress on finaling the Phase Two Plan was slowed. But the plan was approved by the Continuum of Care Board on January 7, 2021. Next slide. The Phase Two Plan is shaped around nine guiding principles: to achieve a community-wide vision, to respond, address, and prevent homelessness. For example, two of such principles include promoting cross-sector collaboration and collective support, and incorporating persons with lived experience in all levels of policy planning and implementation. So those are two such principles. Slide 25. The Phase Two Plan has five regional system-level goals: focusing on priority populations, new resources, and performance. In the next few slides, we'll get into the details of strategies and progress toward implementation. And of course, many of these are going to focus on the need for supportive services. Slide 26. While the system of care will continue to serve all populations, many funding sources and programs target certain sub-populations. From the previous slide, we saw that the first system-level goal was to prioritize ending and dramatically reducing homelessness for specific populations. We heard numerous times from stakeholders that we must demonstrate success to gain community support and to build momentum. Ending homelessness among veterans is an achievable system-level goal. One way we have begun this work is by partnering with the state and community partners on 100-day challenges. Ending unsheltered homelessness among youth and preventing and ending homelessness among families are other system-level goals. Ending homelessness for all populations, including the unsheltered and chronically homeless persons, is an example of perhaps a longer-term system-level goal. And two such successes I wanted to point out very briefly under these two 100-day challenges is that under the youth challenge, 52 youth were permanently housed in that 100-day challenge. And that was able to beat the goal, which was for 50 youth housed. Under the veterans' challenge, it was a little bit more difficult. Forty-six veterans were permanently housed. The goal was 75, but there are a number of other veteran households that are currently in the pipeline. So we are optimistic that we will reach that goal, but it may take a little longer than the 100 days. Next slide. The second system-level goal is to increase housing inventory dedicated to homelessness. This includes both temporary beds and dedicated permanent units. Every day, we are faced with the same questions from community members of how to reduce encampments, or from persons experiencing homelessness, how can they get help? These questions lead to the same answer: it has to start with a bed or a unit. So how many beds and how many units? This will be provided in the strategy section of the plan. And I think Kim has pointed out earlier in our presentation, we can actually create additional shelter beds when every bed is actually turned over four times a year by transitioning persons living in shelters to housing in a faster way. Housing development dollars from the state of California have been increasing from sources like Home Key and No Place Like Home. Other sources, such as the low-income housing tax credit program, are able to leverage limited local investment. Slide 28. Another system-level goal is creating a culture of shelter diversion and prevention across the homeless response system. We must address the inflow of persons becoming homeless in order to truly address the problem. So for example, here, 14% of persons entering the emergency shelter system are already coming from a housed setting. That's about 400 households, which could likely be prevented or diverted from the homeless system of care. It is widely expected that we will see future impacts in the next year from the economic and health impacts of COVID-19. Thirty provider staff and agency leaders have been trained in the best practice of shelter diversion and prevention. And the COC has committed funding to have shelter diversion specialists countywide, with financial assistance to support families and individuals. And one thing I would like to point out very briefly is that, for example, under the HAP Round Two funding, there is a dedication of $800,000 for shelter diversion and prevention, and that notice of funding availability will be out March 8. Slide 29. We must increase the impact of every dollar available to us. Federal funding has shifted greatly to competitive, performance-based awards. The state has also signaled that future allocations will shift to a results-based award system. And the way we maximize impact is by investing in strategies that are working, such as increasing successful exits, shortening the length of time that people are homeless, increasing income and benefits, and decreasing returns to homelessness by improving housing retention. Slide 30. In 2019, the Continuum of Care approved strategies and benchmarks to improve care, such as rehousing families with children within 30 days of becoming homeless, increasing participation in the homeless management information system so that at least 85% of all beds are tracked in the data system, and increasing the rate at which individuals and families in permanent housing retain their housing or exit to other permanent housing to minimize returns to homelessness. Other interventions have included increasing access to employment, volunteerism, and community service through private employers and employment organizations, increase access to mainstream benefits such as SSDI and SSI. And I believe there already have been successes even within the palette village of individuals being able to find work. Slide 31. The Phase One Plan to Address Homelessness identified five key strategies to end homelessness in the county. The Phase Two Plan added priorities to those strategies, creating a detailed implementation plan. Strategy one is increase access to safe and affordable housing, and that is key. Slide 32. As mentioned throughout this presentation, there is currently not enough affordable and permanent supportive housing in the county to meet the need to effectively address homelessness. Key actions include increasing inventory, increasing funding, expanding and enhancing the shelter system, and developing and enhancing partnerships with landlords. We're currently seeing that and doing that even more so now with additional U.S. Treasury funding and now state emergency rental assistance program funding that was alluded to a little bit earlier by Supervisor Hart. Slide 30, 33, I'm sorry. So this slide shows some really good news. Temporary beds, which is the yellow line, and permanent supportive housing beds have increased over the last 10 years. However, it is still not enough to meet the current demand for temporary or permanent supportive placements. However, in 2021, we will show an increase of 450 rapid rehousing beds, and that is because of the increase in one-time funding sources. Slide 34. So here is our GAPS. We've been discussing the need for shelter and beds and increasing inventory. And this slide answers the question, how many beds and how many units are needed? The GAPS analysis was conducted as part of Phase Two calculates that 563 temporary beds are needed. This is emergency shelter or interim housing that includes navigation center models. We can also remember increased temporary beds by increasing the number of times each bed is utilized each year. 1,053 slots of rapid rehousing are needed. Rapid rehousing is permanent housing through short and medium-term assistance to end an individual or family's homelessness. This is most often used in a private market unit. There is also a need for 835 units of permanent supportive housing. Permanent supportive housing is the housing intervention utilized most often for persons experiencing chronic homelessness. Permanent supportive housing provides intensive, long-term supportive services with a long-term rental subsidy. And then lastly, there is a need for 531 long-term subsidies for households that may not need the intensive supportive services, such as you find in permanent supportive housing, but they do need long-term affordability. An example of a person requiring a long-term subsidy to end their homelessness would be a very low-income senior. And I would note that Page Five of the Phase Two Plan does include the projected costs of the different housing interventions. Slide 35. Strategy two is to use best practices for services to examine and hopefully solve barriers to persons staying housed and by taking action. Slide 36. Strategy three is to build a collective action plan and improve data sharing. And the key is to have a region-wide adoption of and commitment to the action plan steps. Next slide. Strategy four is to strengthen support systems, which is available to help residents obtain and maintain housing. And the focus here is to activate the coordinated response system so that persons and households quickly access housing and services. I think we've heard numerous times the need for progressive engagement, consistent engagement, and case management services. Next slide. Strategy five is building provider capacity to address the needs of specific populations. This includes training, prioritization protocols, and improving access points for hard-to-reach populations, among other actions. Next slide. The implementation work plan is the focus of the Phase Two Plan. As Phase One provided broad goals, the Phase Two Plan is designed to give the specific action steps needed to achieve the strategies through collective action. The work plan is dense with a great deal of detail. It is designed to be a working document. We're asking for the board's direction if there are specific action steps that you desire to move forward in the short term versus longer-term projects. The gaps in housing and shelter are overwhelming. While funding dictates some of the pace, the work plan gives you the opportunity to prioritize steps. Next slide. So how will we accomplish key actions set forth in the implementation plan? Staff has identified five steps shown here, such as convening the elected leaders forum, the Continuum of Care continues system improvements, the examination of internal county solutions and actions, the community services department leads to convene stakeholders and advance action, and the adoption of the Phase Two Plan and implementation plan by city councils. Next slide. So the plan is not ordered as a one, two, three actions in order or priority. It does strive to build a system of care that has housing, shelter, and services to meet the needs of individuals and families, including the most complex cases. Many of the action steps are underway, and the availability of funding often sets the pace. This slide shows several key actions contained in the implementation work plan that are underway, such as housing veterans and youth, maximizing one-time funding, future opening of the South County Navigation Center program, quickly mobilizing COVID-19 temporary shelters, fully leasing up new developments with housing retention support, such as the Depot Street Project and the Home Key Studios, expanded capacity and HMIS coverage. Next slide. Staff has identified key action steps to tackle in the near term for the board to consider, such as identifying sites for additional shelter programs, resolving barriers to mainstream services, increasing homeless prevention and expanding shelter diversion, and creating a coordinated encampment response. Next slide. In summary, the board is being asked to receive a presentation on homelessness in the county and to adopt the Phase 2 Action Plan, to provide direction on implementation work plan priorities, and provide other direction as appropriate. Staff concludes its presentation, and we are available to answer any additional questions.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Lockhart. Supervisor Hartman?
Yes, this question has to do with the Continuum of Care, and if you would describe the process leading to Phase 2, what, how has this been vetted? How has it been produced? Who all has looked at it and blessed it before it gets here?
So I think I'll take a stab at it, and then maybe Kimberly can also assist. The Continuum of Care and its members have been involved in the development of the Phase 1 and Phase 2 Plan throughout, not only in providing information on practices, successes, programs. They've also convened meetings where the plan has been reviewed. They've been participants at stakeholder meetings. So they have been involved at every phase of the plan and also in providing input on what has worked and what hasn't worked.
Thank you. All right, do we have any other questions from any of my colleagues before we go to public comment? Not seen any. Madam Clerk, do we have public comment today?
Chair Nelson and members of the board, yes, we have 15 requests to speak on this item, and I do see that a majority of the requests to speak are logged in. If you are not logged in and participating and would like to provide comment, now is the time to do so.
Okay, because you have three minutes, we do want to get through so we can actually still have a robust discussion at the board. So if you, it's possible to keep it to two minutes, that would be preferable, but you do have three minutes to speak here.
Chair Nelson and members of the board, we will begin with Rich Sander to be followed by John Polansky.
Mr. Sander, please proceed.
Is Rich Sander available? I would also like to take this time to remind the public, if you're using a touch-tone phone, you may need to dial *6 to unmute yourselves. Rich Sander?
All right, let's go ahead and move on to Mr. Polan- Okay, Mr. Sander, still?
Chair Nelson, members of the board, it appears he just logged out, so we will move on to John Polansky to be followed by Rob Fredericks.
Okay, Mr. Polansky, and then please proceed. John, we're ready when you are.
Can everyone hear me?
We can now, thank you.
Ah, okay. Thank you so much, Chair Nelson and members of the Board of Supervisors. My name's John Polansky. I'm Director of Housing Development with the Housing Authority of the County of Santa Barbara, and I really appreciate the time that you're taking in this special meeting to talk about this very important issue of people experiencing homelessness. As you know, the Housing Authority's mission is on the far end of the spectrum, and that's the permanent supportive housing. And we are really happy to note that even during the time of COVID, we were able to house 95 individuals coming out of homelessness in the residences at Depot Street, the 80 units up in the city of Santa Maria, and the 15-unit Home Key Studios development. We also really appreciate the focus on support services because handing somebody who's experiencing homelessness a key is only the very, very beginning. We all want them to retain that housing and to be able to move forward. And so the support services that we get from our partners, Behavioral Wellness, Good Sam and others, we really do, it's vital that we look at both the housing and the support services. I know in the discussion, it's really interesting, I've had this conversation with many of you, is that, you know, we, like the community, want homelessness to be addressed as quickly as possible and to move folks from encampments into housing, but you have to have the housing first. So it's interesting when I look at the comparison of the community wanting us to move fast, we want to move fast, but the process oftentimes does take quite a while for permanent supportive housing. So I really do appreciate working with the county. As you know, we've identified county-owned sites, Home Key Studios was county-owned property that BeWell was in. We also have another site on Hollister. So really appreciate the partnership with CSD, with HCD, with BeWell, with General Services, with County Council, and even the County CEO's office. Appreciate the support of all five supervisors. We have 13 developments in some form of process, at least one in all five supervisory districts. We really look forward to trying to address the issue of people experiencing homelessness, including our most vulnerable citizens. And the other last thing is, we have prioritized our limited resources, and that would be the Sex Day Housing助助program, as well as establishing preference points for people experiencing homelessness, and that, of course, includes veterans. Thank you very much for your time, and thank you for your support.
Thank you, Mr. Polansky.
We will now go to Rob Fredericks to be followed by Christine Schwartz.
All right, Mr. Fredericks, when you're ready.
Great. Good morning, Chair Nelson and Supervisors. I am the Director of the Housing Authority of the City of Santa Barbara, as well as the current Chair of the Continuum of Care. While there is always room for improvement, over the last few years, I have witnessed much better coordination between community organizations and public agencies such as ours to secure much-needed housing and supportive services in addressing the homeless issues throughout the county. This is in large part due to the work of George Chapin's HCD group, including Dinah, Kimberly, Albers, and the rest of the HCD team. I also want to commend your HCD team for the great work in creating this Phase 2 homeless plan, which lays out the priorities and actions needed to address and reduce homelessness in our county. Unfortunately, as you are all well aware, we have a severe crisis of homelessness across the nation with well over a half a million people living without a home on any given night. One of the main causes of this is due to the lack of available, appropriate, and affordable housing for people in need in almost every community. This crisis is nowhere worse than in California with over 150,000 people living without a home. This high rate of homelessness is painfully visible in our own county with encampments sprouting up in parks, along freeways, in the other neighborhoods. If we are to be successful in addressing the issue of homelessness locally, all organizations must work together for proper coordination of resources to provide the much-needed shelter, housing, and services. Tripping down the plan to the basics, what is really needed from my perspective is increased affordable housing through rental subsidies and construction of new dedicated units, as well as expanded intensive wraparound services and mental health support to ensure retention of those moving from homelessness. To achieve this, needed additional sources of funding is essential, including possibly an ongoing stream of local funding that I would hope that the board would take up at some point. I would like to close by letting you know that our Housing Authority is committed to providing new housing units and working with other local organizations to ensure that once people obtain a home, they do not return to homelessness. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to provide these comments this morning.
Thank you, Mr. Fredericks.
We will now go on to Christine Schwartz to be followed by Edwin Weaver.
Ms. Schwartz, when you're ready.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can.
You can, okay, excellent. Good morning, Chair Nelson, members of the Board of Supervisors, county executive staff and community partners. I'm Christine Schwartz, Executive Director of New Beginnings. Our services include shelter and rapid rehousing for unsheltered veterans, families, and individuals countywide. I'd like to thank you all for convening this dedicated meeting to discuss the state of homelessness in Santa Barbara County. This is a much-needed and important discussion. This past year has found us all humbled by the countless challenges we face in sheltering and housing, those most vulnerable among us. The past year has also provided many opportunities for local government and community-based organizations to address these challenges in partnership with each other. I believe our community stepped up to this challenge, improved how collaboration and the strategic allocation of resources does make a difference, but there is clearly much more work to be done. While the influx of cares and state funding has helped New Beginnings, for example, to expand our safe parking program countywide and to house more families and individuals than ever before, this funding is somewhat restrictive and likely short-lived. Flexibility is key to innovation and progress. If we learned anything this past year, it is that we need an ongoing, reliable, and dedicated funding source to make real and lasting change. We have seen what is possible with flexible funding. Let's figure out how to allocate more flexible funding so that we can provide emergency rental and housing assistance, incentivize landlords to partner with us, connect clients to employment and other types of income, and meet gaps in housing retention services so that we can help families and individuals stay housed. In Santa Barbara County, we need more shelters, we need more permanent supportive housing, we need navigation centers, we need rapid rehousing dollars, we need homeless prevention dollars, we need outreach support, and we need more affordable housing. We also need your continued help and support so that we can make sure that everyone in our county has a home. To that end, New Beginning stands today with you, the County Department of Housing and Community Development, and our countywide partners in support of Phase 2 of the Community Action Plan to address homelessness. Thank you for your leadership, your support, and for taking the time today to make an impact.
Thank you, Ms. Schwartz.
We will now go to Edwin Weaver to be followed by Lynn Gibbs.
Edwin, you're up.
Sorry, I had to unmute. Can you hear me now?
We can.
Good morning, everybody. My name is Edwin Weaver. I'm the Executive Director of Fighting Back Santa Maria Valley. I really want to thank the Board of Supervisors for holding today's meeting. You know, Fighting Back has started the Young Adult Services Homeless Outreach Program through the HEEP funding that we received three years ago. With that funding, we were able to purchase a home on Park Avenue pretty close to Supervisor Lavenino's home and open that to four permanent, four permanent supportive housing beds that are fully occupied. We're really proud of that work. We've also been able to leverage that money to do street outreach to transitional-age youth, that's youth 18 to 24 years old, and we've reached 94 of those youth and gotten them into HMIS, as well as 35 of those have been housed. One young woman that we've been working with wrote a letter in, but I don't think it got in in time, and she wrote that she's been with Fighting Back for two years. She's 18 years old, and over those two years, she's been couch surfing and been homeless. During that time, we've been able to help her successfully graduate from high school. She's in Hancock. We've been able to provide her with food stamps and other basic needs, and currently she is reviewing a lease. We hope to get her permanently housed by the end of the week. We're very excited about our work, and as Super Lavenino said, you know, this is a long slog. It's short-term solutions and the tyranny, the urgent can take our eyes off the ball, but I really want to continue encouraging the board to support any youth-directed services. If we're going to address this homeless, our homelessness problem, it makes a lot of sense to get our youth off the streets so they don't become chronically homeless over their lifetime. So thank you for your time and support, and thank you to Kimberly and the team for helping us with all the technical needs that we've had in using these funds. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Edwin. Edwin, we did get the letter from Estefany in our packet this morning. Thank you.
We will now go to Lynn Gibbs to be followed by Chuck Flax.
Ms. Gibbs, when you're ready.
Supervisors, my name's Lynn Gibbs. I'm a member of the National Alliance on Mental Illness, and I chair our affiliates' Public Policy Committee. The increased focus on outreach and engagement has been really impressive. I'd like to speak to, further to the question of tools for people, getting people into treatment who are chronically homeless, are severely mentally ill, and don't recognize their need for treatment and housing. We have a program that's underutilized. It's the only outpatient program that mandates treatment. It's called Assisted Outpatient Treatment, or LAURA's Law. California believes so strongly in the program that as of this upcoming July, all California counties will be required to have a program unless its Board of Supervisors votes not to and states their reasons for not doing so. And this is because it's been recognized as an evidence-based, successful program. It entails the involvement of a civil court judge who is an extended member of the treatment team, supporting the client and tracking progress, seeing that everybody on the team's doing what they're meant to do. It's a six-month program that reduces homelessness, incarceration, and psychiatric hospitalization, saving money. We sincerely appreciate the ongoing support of the supervisors for this program, and we believe that it needs to be more fully utilized. It's not a boutique program, and it can be integrated to help people retain their housing. We see people with chronic mental illness repeatedly cycle in and out of housing and not be able to retain it. And this treatment program helps them retain their housing, and it helps many to return to their family homes, to live with their families again. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Gibbs.
We will now go to Chuck Flax to be followed by Sharon Byrne.
Ms. Flax, please proceed.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Chuck Flax. I'm now an independent consultant working with housing and homeless providers around the county. I just wanted to start by saying congratulations. Congratulations to the HCD Department, particularly the leadership of Kimberly Albers and Dinah. Five years ago, I took over the lead of C3H, and so much has happened in the last five years that I think you all should be proud and excited. We now have coordinated outreach countywide. We have new navigation center models in many locations. We've seen a huge expansion of rapid rehousing. We have plans for creating new models of help, like diverting people away from shelters and back to their families of origin and other kinds of resources. We have a huge buy-in to the HMIS data sharing system so that we now can say with confidence that we know where most of the homeless people in Santa Barbara County are. We have very successful models of multidisciplinary teams that are starting to expand with new resources and new expertise, and we've seen many new units built specifically for people with mental health issues as well as people who are homeless. I mean, I just am amazed and think that the work that's happened over the last five years has been absolutely phenomenal. So I, and I also think I support the plan. I think the plan is comprehensive, it's extensive, it's ambitious, it's a little overwhelming. But I want to leave with a couple of ideas. First of all, I want you all to consider that homelessness is the tip of a larger problem, of a larger iceberg, that is a problem with housing in general in the state of California. We're currently 3 million units short of housing for all income groups to, for people to be able to live and work in the same place. We're seeing tens of thousands of people commute daily into the city of Santa Barbara for work, but live in far-flung places and coming from further and further out because they can't afford housing within our community. So I encourage you to think about the problem of homelessness as part of a much larger problem of not having a region that's well-designed and well-planned to handle the growth that we're seeing in our, in our business sectors. we're seeing in our business sectors. And I guarantee that after COVID is tackled, we're going to see tourism come roaring back, we're going to see jobs come roaring back. I really encourage, I echo what Rob Frederick said, we need to work together as a community to approve new local revenues, new bond measures for housing construction for all incomes, and new taxes that would create the supportive services that we need for the people that need those additional supportive services. We clearly need new shelter, but as Kimberly has shown us, we can have shelter that is temporary and--
Thank you, Ms. Flax.
COVID-friendly. Thank you. I appreciate being able to speak. Lots of work to do. Thank you.
Indeed, thank you. And I'm going to go ahead and close public comment so that we can get through these speakers and get to the board.
Chair Nelson and members of the board, we will now go to Sharon Byrne to be followed by Gina Sawaya.
Ms. Burns, when you're ready.
Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak and for holding this forum. I wanted to address a few things today that are concerning for me. One is the continuum of care and the way that that is managed, that dollars are allocated to services but by the people and the organizations that will receive those dollars. And I just have questions about that, that are these the most innovative and far-reaching proposals? Are they being actively sought, encouraged, and then funded? I'd love for the board to be able to take into some consideration the seismic economic shifts induced by the pandemic, that we are seeing large office commercial vacancies, and are there opportunities there to repurpose, rezone quickly to provide housing for individuals experiencing homelessness, same with motel courts, right? Motor court hotels that might not have fared well during the pandemic. Are we, you know, looking at those as possible opportunities for first sort of tier housing? I've heard concern from shelter providers that some of the individuals that are seeking shelter with them have enormous needs, that overnight shelter just can't possibly accommodate, that the needs for mental health, for addiction treatment, just for basic ID, things like that, and wondering if we should repurpose some of those to provide stronger level of support than just merely overnight emergency, you know, shelter. Having fire engage in the encampment fires and in public safety is huge, and it's new, and I would love for us to continue to leverage that relationship. Our Montecito Fire Department strongly supported our outreach project, and I would love to see that across the county. I love seeing that we're doing outreach across the county, we're doing more outreach across the county than we have ever done before. Not sure that that is tightly coordinated. We know that individuals move around, and so it'd be great to be able to work with those individuals, no matter what jurisdiction of the county they relocate themselves to, and not lose them just because they went to a different location. And we also need more placements for people who won't or can't go to a shelter due to capacity and COVID constraints. There needs to be more first step off the encampment or first step off of living on the street capabilities, and some of that is being funded now and filled now by hotel placements. We'd love to see more of that continue. And please don't underestimate what community can do in terms of funding and taking responsibility for what goes on in their own community, that are we opening outreach and funding capabilities and asking citizens to participate as much in helping deal with individuals that are dealing with homelessness as much as possible? Don't just leave it to the homeless services providers, you know, let's engage the wider community. And so, those are my comments, and thank you very much for holding this today. This is an extremely important discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Sharon.
We will now go to Gina Sawaya to be followed by Beth Sweetwater.
Ms. Sawaya, when you're ready.
Hi, my name is Gina Sawaya. My pronouns are she/her. I live in Isla Vista, and I'm an organizer for a local mutual aid group that serves meals five times per week, mostly serving houseless residents. I was really heartened by a lot of the success stories I heard today, but I know from my firsthand experience that a lot of my friends that live in the parks are struggling, and I just kind of wanted to discuss a few ideas that I had and that I've heard from folks who live outside that I wanted to pass along. I want to encourage the county to think really boldly and creatively about how to address houseless issues. The county is really the only game in town with enough resources to deal with these things, and I know that a lot of our local agencies have really struggled to provide this same level of support. From Kimberly Albers' presentation earlier in the day, I liked that you included that statistic about that there are many houseless, many of the houseless folks here, the vast majority are actually from Santa Barbara County. Not that I think we should discriminate against folks who are coming here from outside of the county, but just that it goes to show that resources are not even available for our own residents. We can't even take care of our own county residents in terms of making sure that everyone is housed and has access to basic needs. A lot of the facilities that have, a lot of the Band-Aids that we've used during COVID, such as allowing people to move into hotels, the Six Month Tiny Home Program in Isla Vista, and the quote-unquote temporary Peoples' Park sanctioned housing area, these are all temporary, and I'm really concerned about what's going to happen to my friends living in the parks when some of these options are no longer available, and that's just around the corner. So, I'm already concerned about that, even though I'm happy to see that many of our residents have been housed over the past year. Supervisor Lavenino mentioned that, you know, there's a lot of, there's a shortage of resources available that lead to people ending up potentially in the criminal justice system. I don't mean to put words in your mouth, but it was during the criminal justice part of the conversation. And one of the reasons why people are so hesitant and why it takes so many touches to get somebody to move into a shelter is because they're scared, there's no trust there. Why would they move into a place that has strong curfews, a lot of rules? And I think that although, you know, shelters that have rules, I understand why those rules are in place, but I think people should have more democratic control and self-determination over their situation, no matter what kind of shelter they're in, and I think that people can make the best decisions for themselves most of the time and should be allowed to do so. With that in mind, I'd love to see something creative, like some kind of sanctioned outdoor permanent sleeping places, like places that people can go and be safe and not be bothered or harassed by the police on a permanent basis, because there's always going to be a fraction of people who prefer to live outside, and that should be allowed, and also people who, there's always going to be a shortage of shelter spots and shelter beds. So, it would be great if there are places where people could be safe and secure without, at a very low cost. Also, I just want to end by saying that we really struggle with helping people because they can't access the internet, they can't charge their phones. So, I really think a long-term project should be getting universal internet, electricity, and water access for every Santa Barbara County resident. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Sawaya.
We will now go to Beth Sweetwater to be followed by Ash Valenti.
Ms. Sweetwater, when you're ready.
Okay, can you hear me now?
We can. Please proceed.
Okay, thank you. I'm kind of a history person, and I like to learn, and I end up listening to a lot of podcasts. And yesterday, I just happened to run across a rebroadcast on the uncertain hour from the Marketplace, and it was talking about housing and shelters and the history of where we got. And I suggest, even though the person a while ago was talking about how history isn't relevant now, it's the most relevant, because ever since the New Deal, we've been in a struggle of what do we do with people and government? And we have been adhering for the last 40 years, since Ronald Reagan's Reaganomics, to the idea that people can't be their own person, that they must be dehumanized in some way, and they must be housed in a way and given services and directed in a way, and that they have to, these kind of people have to be mentally ill, and we're just missing the boat with that because that isn't true. And I suggest that we take a look at the basic history, the policies, and how we're kind of still going to find the solutions today through the policies and the beliefs that don't really work. And if we don't do that, then we just kind of go in a circle. One of the ideas that I know has popped up all across the country are those small pop-up neighborhoods, small houses together, and the whole idea is that unhoused people, when they have a house and they have dignity, the rest of it, a lot of it falls into place. And so, all the good intentions that I've heard today, and all the funding that California does until it's not there, is all kind of on a weaker foundation than it should be. And if we can't build that foundation, then we'll be forever, you know, we have it, we don't, this and that program, this is gone, this, and I now all choose as a Texas issue, the little Texas. And we are in talking about these problems, it's, we are talking really with an unsustainable idea that can't succeed. And I know we all want it to succeed, and I know all the hard work that goes into it, and I just think we need to take a different perspective on what is coming from the past and how, what's useful and what is not useful, what's true, what's not true, and develop policies from there, and I think you can develop a healthier policy. And, you know, those small pop-up neighborhoods, I think it's Salt Lake City is one, but Colorado has another, they're very effective as far as costs are concerned. So, instead of putting people, like this one woman who was in a house--
Thank you, Ms. Sweetwater.
Okay, she had to escape, but she's employable, and she's stuck in a shelter.
Thank you, that's your time.
We will now go to Ash Valenti to be followed by Andrea Heine.
Ash, when you're ready.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, thank you. I'm Ash Valenti. Some of you know me from EcoVista and other things I'm involved in. I should say I'm not speaking on behalf of the RPD Board, which I'm a member of, but speaking on behalf of myself as someone who was homeless in 2014. I'm really proud of all the things you're working on. I think we all are. I want to say it's great that we're working on giving people more options, and like Gina was saying, it's important to have a lot of options so that people don't feel like they're being forced into something. But that, yeah, that's not really why I'm calling today. I'm calling to push back on the assumption that everyone has to go indoors. It's great to give people lots of options to go indoors if they want to, but I think there should also be options of safe campsites as well. Obviously, I understand that, you know, just anywhere all the time is not going to be seen as an acceptable place to camp, but I think there should be multiple places that people are allowed to camp at for free, and there should be bathrooms and the things that people need. I also think it's really valid to not want to have to pay a landlord. I think one solution to that is enabling more co-ops. So, yeah, just to wrap it up, EcoVista is a group I'm in that has a lot of great minds and hearts, and we would love to help more on getting community feedback on solutions to homelessness. Thank you.
Thank you, Ash.
And we will now go to our final speaker, Andrea Heine.
Ms. Heine, when you're ready.
Hello, I just wanted to thank the Board of Supervisors for taking such a concerted look and effort at fixing this problem of homelessness. It affects all of us, and most of all, those that are homeless, so I just wanted to thank you for that.
All right, thank you. So, with that, we're going to, we've been going here pretty hard. Let's go ahead and take a small break, just a restroom break, and then we'll be back to the board for hopefully a robust discussion about what we've heard today. Thank you. Five minutes? All right, welcome back. All right, so we're back to the board. I know we do have a clarifying comment from Mr. Chapchan about the Caltrans policy and Galleta's policy, so let me go to Mr. Chapchan, and then I'm going to go to questions from my colleagues of staff, and then I'm going to hopefully allow you all to get a chance to make some statements, and then hopefully we'll flow that into a discussion. So, Mr. Chapchan?
I'm sorry, Chair. I just got back. What was the question?
My understanding is you had some comments about Caltrans?
Oh, yeah. Just a clarification on Caltrans. Our state has been working with Caltrans, as has the city of Galleta. They meet, they used to meet before the pandemic on a regular basis out there to make sure that there's cleanup at the 101, and they have done a number of cleanups along the 101 for fire safety reasons, as well as the railroads. So, they are actively involved in the homeless issue.
All right, thank you. All right, then back to the board. Do any of my colleagues have any further questions for staff? All right, not seeing any questions for staff. Do we have any comments? Supervisor Hartman?
Thank you. Well, this is a huge issue, so I'm going to start first by our Phase Two action plan, which I very much support. I, with Supervisor Hart, who chairs the electeds, have had an opportunity to see this evolve. And what I really like about this plan is that it breaks down different segments of the unsheltered population. It doesn't lump them all together, which Ms. Sweetwater, in her comment, urged us not to do, and this doesn't. And as it does that, it allows us to kind of get our arms around it. So, you know, we have 210 veterans, and we have 82 homeless youth, and we have 90 families. I mean, we can deal with that, and each of those is their own story, but they also have some commonalities. So, I fully endorse, and I am so glad that Mr. Flax took the time to comment and kind of put this in perspective of how much we have done over the last five years. Sometimes it seems overwhelming, especially during this COVID era where we've seen shelters closed down or not be able to handle as many people, and the economics are difficult, and so it seems like the problem is getting bigger, but we really are doing a great deal. And so, the first thing is that a lot of effort has gone into this. It's my understanding that the funding flows from the federal government and also to a large extent from the state government for community of care, integrated management, and response to the unsheltered population. And so, our county, many, many organizations and people have invested an enormous amount in getting us to this point. So, I fully endorse this, and I'm really grateful to everybody who has put so much time and effort, and I think that that has made us more competitive for other kinds of grants and the huge step that we are taking. And then, I'd like to come back to the issue of the more service-resistant, the encampments, because I think it's a smaller percentage of the overall population, but it creates a lot of the difficulties for us as elected officials and in our communities. I'd like to just take a minute and describe, I was involved at the San Inez River, and there was an enormous amount of work done ahead of time to talk to people. I went around with the police chief and the deputy assigned to the river. He knew everybody by name, knew all their history, and so there was a tremendous amount of upfront work, and then we got them to the river park, and it was about two weeks, and many people. Andy Caldwell once said something that's really powerful. He said, "What happens with people who are unsheltered is they get unconnected. They get disconnected from their family and friends and community, and they kind of sink into more isolation." And so, the job at the river park was to try to create connections. Where is your family? We'll keep your dog. We want to support you and your growth and your connections. But that was only a two or three week, and we couldn't sustain it, we didn't have the resources, and so I think we learned a lot from that process. And then, we had the issue in Isla Vista where a lot of people were camping in the different small parks adjacent to neighborhoods, and the question was, well, what can we do about this? We can't produce enough housing and get people into-- We can't produce enough housing and get people into permanent or supportive housing. We've got an emergency. What can we do? So we talked about and had to work with a lot of community members, some who thought, just let them be. We, you know, they're free and it's COVID, and just let it be. But the fire people went out and said, "This is too dangerous. It's too dangerous for the unsheltered people. We can't even get in there." You saw how many emergency calls they had. And so that just was not tenable. So we worked with the Wrenton Park District and said, you know, could we have a safe camping program? We already have safe parking program. It's just now moving into North County, but where people can go at night in their vehicles and know that they aren't going to be attacked, and they know that they've got a place with facilities. We have one here in our county, and there's a porta potty, and it works, and it's seamless for many of us. And it's a very good thing to do, and I hope people in North County will embrace this. But the camps, we didn't know exactly in Isla Vista, could we have a safe camping program? We thought we'd put up something like a fire camp, but that with the cold weather didn't work. So then the pallet house, and thanks to Dinah and Kim, who went out and found this, I think in Orange County, and brought the idea back here, and Ivy Wrenton Park that said we could do it, and the CSD that said we could use the community center for a six-month period. But you need a lot of infrastructure for the electricity to keep people warm, and you need a place for the services to be provided. And so it's not like you can just have any old camp. But what we learned, or what I saw in talking to people there who are both delivering services and also those who are encamped, and let me just say, we have the pallet houses, and then we have the People's Park next to it. And we were able to move people from other parks to these areas because we provided storage and we had a place for them to go. So we complied with the CDC guidance, and we complied also with the Boise decision as our county council interpreted for us. So we were able to nudge people here. And what I can't emphasize enough is that people who have been living unsheltered for so long, their whole patterns are disrupted, so they don't sleep on regular cycles. They have to stay up at night to keep themselves and their possessions safe. That's often why they get dogs to help with that. And so bringing them into the pallet house, it takes about a month to get on a regular sleep-wake cycle. And you've got to have that kind of stability, because then the people who offer the services, you're awake, you're alert, you can respond, they know where to find you. One of the interesting things is we found that people in the People's Park were, they don't quite want to go into the pallet yet, but some went into the pallet but kept their tent in the People's Park, just so they had, you know, it's a gradual transition. But as people are together and they see other people finding their way up and out, they, it puts a kind of peer pressure, or I can do that, or I'd like to do that, or I know that person. And what we've seen, again, I can't emphasize, the human, they're small victories, but for the people involved, they're huge. I mean, putting off surgeries, I mean, if you're physically unable to avail yourselves of things because you're, because of, I won't go into the details, but some of these people are really, really suffering physically. And to get that straightened out and get those procedures done so that they can, again, be stabilized, so that they can take advantage. So the people who are asking for, I agree with Supervisor Lavenino, we cannot build enough housing fast enough to deal with this population. We need to find and think about more innovative ways to do it. And I think the safe parking is really important, because that's where people go when they're recently losing their homes, they're in their cars, and they need someplace to go. And if we know where those places are, then we can be there to serve and help and get them right back. I also think we need to consider safe camping and safe pallet homes. And what they did at People's Park was they actually just marked it out, and you've got this much space. And we go, the fire department goes and keeps, makes sure that people have to keep their possessions in, that they have to keep aisles clear. And this is better for the people who live there, and it protects everyone else as well. And it, again, makes them more available for the kind of services, because if you can't find people, you can't really bring the services. So I think this is a way, I mean, it's a good question to ask, do we really need the 14 visits or the 20 visits if we can get our arms around people in a place? And so I'll just throw this out there. I'd like to see this in every district if we had the money, something like what we have developed in Isla Vista. But we need community support, and that's what we had in Isla Vista, is we can't all say, "We don't want homeless people, but we don't want these supportive housing," or "We don't want safe parking." We've got to, as a community, step up, because it's only as a community that we're going to solve this. So I get quite emotional, so thank you for listening to me. It's been, it's been one of the most challenging issues I've encountered as a supervisor, and at least we've made a little headway, and I'm very proud of that.
Thank you, Supervisor Hartman. Supervisor Hart?
Yeah, I want to thank Supervisor Hartman for, you know, making this very clear and personal and, you know, sharing her experience and insight in Isla Vista. I think it's really helpful for our conversation. You know, this is one of the hardest things we do collectively, is try to serve our neighbors who are experiencing homelessness every day, and try to balance, you know, the concerns that neighbors have about encampments in the neighborhoods. This is not easy, and I think you did a really great job of describing how the transition from being on the street in a really disrupted way with your life, that it's not a direct, clear, simple path to being housed, that there are a lot of steps in that for every person, and that's a complicated journey. And we have to have unique individual responses to people and treat people as humans and people to be effective at that. And COVID-19 has just made this a lot harder. Fortunately, there have been additional resources that have come to respond to that challenge, and we've learned a lot of lessons over the past year, and our system has been strengthened and is getting better. But at the end of the day, you know, the entire framework is, can only be successful if we do build enough permanent housing, because I think what you're saying is, you know, we can't build it fast enough, but we can't give up on that challenge either. That is the real challenge here. And it's expensive, and it's hard, and it, you know, it is hard to find sites, and there are lots of things that are getting in the way. But we need every step of the continuum. We need supportive housing, we need low-income housing for people, we just need affordable housing, more of it. You know, as Mr. Flax is exactly right, it's a statewide problem, it's a national problem. One of the biggest policy failures of the past decade was the states abandoning the really successful, growing redevelopment agency funding model that provided stable local government funding for affordable housing. We've got a 10-year hole now in that system, because the state took that money away. And the Housing Authority at the city of Santa Barbara and the county both benefited from those funding sources, and we've lost ground as a result of that. So, you know, I'm excited that maybe the state has understood that was a mistake and that they're trying to put that money back in a permanent way so that we can plan and build these units. But in the meantime, we need to be quick and agile and take advantage of opportunities to get motels or hotels or other things that have come along, and that's been very hard. We have had opportunities where we had the funding aligned, we thought we had sites identified, you know, for one reason or another that slipped through our grasp, and, you know, the owners wouldn't sell to the county for this purpose, which is really frustrating. And I want to thank the Chamber of Commerce, the South Coast Chamber of Commerce for engaging in this issue. You know, hopefully they can help us with this. Hopefully there are property owners that are listening to this, who might be interested in working with the county to make those kind of acquisitions. You know, if there, if you have a hotel or a motel or a site that's appropriate for this use, get in touch with us and help us make this transition. We're going to be able to try and figure out ways to put the funding together to make that happen. But we need partners, we need philanthropy, we need collaboration from everybody, because these properties often go on the market quickly, and, you know, we have a process, it's not as quick, and hopefully we can, we can get better about that. I also agree with Supervisor Hartman. I think that taking this strategically, one subset at a time, is a much more manageable way to look at this. It is overwhelming when you think of 2,000 people on our list and trying to find housing for them. But I think it's the right strategy to focus on veterans and to focus on youth, because those are subsets that are manageable and digestible, and we can be successful with those smaller numbers. And with that success, as Supervisor Lavenino pointed out, you know, we've, in the past, we've talked about, you know, the 10-year plan to end homelessness and the other strategies that were grand and, you know, aspirational, but we didn't achieve those things, and that makes people frustrated and don't feel empowered. I think a more discreet, achievable goal is empowering and reinforces success, and that makes sense to me, to identify those specific populations in need and make sure that we're making meaningful progress to address that. I agree about the safe parking program. It's a really successful program that marries, you know, a temporary condition with the services people need to get into the system to get permanent housing. And I want to congratulate the city of Long Poak for embracing that strategy and moving forward right now. That's a big event that is worth celebrating and congratulating the city of Long Poak about. And I would encourage all the jurisdictions in the county to embrace that strategy. You know, it's immediate, it's direct, you know, we, all we need is more resources to scale up the assistance that people are provided through that process. But it provides stability, and it provides, you know, a safe place for people to be sleeping at night, so that they can get their lives back on track and be in a position to make improvements and help themselves, and let us help them as well. So I'm encouraged, I think that Mr. Flax's observation that progress is being made is valid and real and true. There are a lot of people that spoke today who have tremendous expertise in this area, you know, and I'm always looking to them to give direction to the board and the county for its strategy. So I'm encouraged, and I think that with the new financial commitment from the federal government, the state government, if that was a little more predictable, frankly, a lot more predictable, we could make a lot more progress more quickly, and that's what I'd hope from our partners.
All right. Thank you, Supervisor Hart. So go ahead and Supervisor Lavenino, and then Supervisor Williams.
All right. Well, I think this has been a great discussion. I don't know whose idea it was to call this special meeting, but whoever it was, I think it was a great idea. You know, I think we have more talented people in this space, whether it's our own staff or, you know, the Sylvia Bernards of the world. You know, we heard from John Kowanski and Rob Fredericks and Chuck Flax, and I'll always have a special place in my heart for Jeff Schaefer, and also Ed Weaver and Eddie Taylor, guys that are out there on the street making it happen. I also want to give a big shout out to former supervisor Doreen Farr. She's the one that kind of brought this, this idea into my head that we could actually make progress. And, you know, and like I said, I don't want to come across as the, you know, the wet blanket. It's just, it does become very frustrating when you're, you don't see the progress. And I really appreciate those that came to the meeting and talked about all the progress that has been made and the individuals, and there are achievements and milestones that we've hit. And, you know, there's just not a lot of fanfare around it, because, like I said, there is another 1,600 people that we still need to take care of. You know, and I'm the one that actually talked about the 10-year plan, and my answer to everybody that's always come to me and said, you know, "Oh, you really think you're going to end homelessness, or you're going to end poverty? Why are you doing a poverty study, or you're going to end violence?" That's never going to go away. But if each of us, I think, can say, and everybody out there in your life, if you leave it better than when you got it, and you make progress, that's what it's all about. So I have no illusion that we're going to end homelessness. You know, it might be a great goal to have. And I also agree that I think it's important that we do focus on these subset groups. And just wanted to let you know, one of the things that we're doing in my office, Sandy Agalos, who is a part-time employee and heads up Stand Down for me, we've basically taken the list this last year of veterans that have identified themselves as homeless at Stand Down. And we're doing the really simple work of blocking and tackling, of calling that person, tracking them down, finding out what their situation is, you know, how can we help you, redirecting them to other resources, staff, county resources. But this is a slog, you know, and COVID's just made it worse. So I'm, like I said, I'm very excited that we're talking about it. I think, you know, it's almost check the box, all of the above. I think safe parking's an issue. There were a few things that were brought up today that I wasn't, you know, overly excited about, you know, the idea of just letting people camp wherever they like inside the city. You know, I think other people have a right to enjoy their life, you know, without the hindrance of somebody else interfering. I think there's a lot of public health concerns as well of, you know, if they're out there with no bathrooms, I think you put two and two together and figure out what happens. So, you know, but like I said, I think we need to check the box of all of the above. And it really just comes down to resources, and I think Supervisor Hartman hit it on the head. You know, we have tons of people that come and tell us that, you know, that they're affected by homelessness, they want to see us address the issue. But then, especially in some districts, you talk about an affordable housing project, and we fill the room up with people that say, "Oh, can't do that here, I don't want to do it here, it's going to drive down housing prices, it's going to have impact," you know. And so we all have to sacrifice a little bit to make this a better place. So, again, I'm all on board, you know, looking for other revenue sources and avenues to address this problem that is not going to go away on our watch, and all we can do really is try to make it a little bit better.
All right. Thank you, Supervisor Lavenino. Supervisor Williams?
Well, I agree with my colleagues that the most important thing is a sustained and determined effort, and one that's looking at the long term. I mean, I appreciate the courage that is in some of the federal frameworks in the past, like when the 10-year plan to end chronic homelessness, for example. But I just also go, you know, come on, what hubris to think that in 10 years we could solve a problem, you know, that governments in Europe have been trying to, you know, restrict, suppress, end homelessness for 700 years and unsuccessful, and we're just going to, you know, wham, and fix it in 10 years. That's not going to happen. But we need to be determined to make progress lest it get worse. And I think we need to look at the context of housing in the state of California as one of the primary movers and the economic dislocation of COVID as two primary threats that could make this much worse and that we need to guard against. And of course, the most important action that we can take, both to do this long term and to meet that threat, is to build housing. And I know we have only limited opportunities in state and federal funding, they've gotten better. I even think that we should be thinking about, you know, if this federal aid package comes in as it's proposed, or even half of what's proposed, that we should think about using any backfill, some of the backfill amounts to do some of the projects we've been frankly ready to do. You know, we've been annotated two sites in the first district for transitional housing. I think we should go for it, right? That's my backyard, that's my district, and we should be doing it in each. I think the other thing I agree with very much is we do need to replicate what's happened in Isla Vista, both because in Isla Vista, both because of the exploitation and self-harm that exists in the camps, that is not a sustainable solution for our communities. And the only way we can legally end the camps is to create a safer environment, either a permanent supportive housing, which is the best, or temporary housing. And it's kind of a shame, you know, Alice Gleghorn, Dr. Gleghorn has at least 20, 20-something safari tents that people, you know, pay El Capitan Canyon $180 a night to sleep in. She's got 20-something of them just sitting in the yard waiting for a place because the we and the community have not yet identified any place that's acceptable to put this kind of facility besides the spot in Isla Vista. And I think we need to challenge ourselves and, and look at that need because the alternative was worse. The alternative is the perpetuation of the camps. And the camps right now have waned because of cold weather, but guess what, the weather's changing. They're going to come roaring back if we do not have better options. Lastly, I, I want to put out a plea both to the community and to us for a safe parking If you're listening to this, Safe Parking Program is really fed and expanded by business owners or churches that offer up a park, a safe place to park to the organization. The organization enforces the rules of that safe parking. And obviously, the experience is different based on the individuals that, that are in the program, but the experience is generally very good. And I think that's really necessary if we are to prevent massive more people living on the street. Because when people are parking in places that, you know, they can get towed, then they, you know, once their vehicle gets towed, it's not like they then go find an apartment to live in. No, they're, they're gone from living in a vehicle to go live in on the street. And the outcomes are often much worse. So I also think we need to think about the restraint that our personnel use on, you know, the ticketing and towing of vehicles that people live in because it's rare when the result of that has actually spurred a better result for that individual or for society. So I, you know, I want to again return to housing, I just think we cannot address this without housing. Most of the other things are important, but they don't address the basic, basic market mechanism where we continue to not have enough housing and then that squeezes out the people who are most vulnerable because of price. Most Santa Barbaraans that I know of, you know, South County residents live only a couple paychecks from, you know, that's all they got in, in cushion. So it takes a lot of people, only one or two life events, a divorce plus an addiction or some other combination of events to end up on the street. And we've got to prevent that. And keep in mind, this could get a lot worse if we don't redouble our efforts.
Thank you Supervisor Williams. And I've, I've got a few comments too, and then I think we can kind of bounce some things around between the five of us. You know, this issue of homelessness is one that's really important to me. You know, I'm, I'm, I'm the supervisor from the most conservative area in the county and, and that's sometimes not the place that you would think that you would have someone that is a, a big advocate for homelessness services and, and really engaging in this area. But before I was a supervisor, before I was a teacher, I envisioned myself to someday be a missionary. And I'm, I'm a son of a pastor and as a youth and as an adult, I did a lot of mission work into Latin America and into Mexico and, and saw some of the most impoverished communities in the world. And, you know, there's something that we all, you know, owe our fellow, our fellow man to be able to give to those people. So in 2018, when I was in Lompoc and getting in the San Andres River, I saw something worse than I had seen in any of the mission trips that I had ever been a part of, in our backyard, in Santa Barbara County, in California, in the United States. It just, it baffles me that we allow that kind of suffering so close to where we sleep at night. And so, you know, I'm going to push on all of you in my conversation is that, I like to end that. I think that what we have out there, the, the lawlessness, the drug addiction, that that's something that should not be acceptable to any of us, one more night of it for any of these people. And that's why I've been asking questions about Boise or, you know, bridge shelters or temporary structures, whatever it needs to take, whatever the, you know, her clean effort we needed to at the county to say, we're not going to do encampments anymore. You know, we're not going to be open for business for encampments in Santa Barbara County. And I know that that has some consequences and it rolls down from there. And I'm not saying it's just bridge shelters, you know, maybe it's a combination of safe parking, bridge shelters, safe camping, you know, whatever order that we need to have to accomplish that goal is what I'm really passionate about. Let's figure out a way, there are ingredients, the courts have told us, if you do X, Y, and Z, then you can do the next step. And so, you know, instead of fighting it and saying, okay, there's nothing we can do about that, I mean, let's, let's, I want to lean into that, that's my, my goal in this space is to say, we can't allow that. When I was down there, you know, there, there are young women, you know, somebody's daughter down there that are, that are being abused on a daily basis, all throughout our county. I mean, if, if those crime statistics showed up on, on the news, I mean, it, there would be a human outcry for that amount of suffering. Again, that's in our backyard, guys, there's no doubt about it, it's happened in Lompoc, it's happened in Isla Vista, it's happened in creek beds and behind shopping centers all throughout our community. And I just, I'm done with that. And I really am wanting to say to all of you, let's, let's figure out a way to move forward. There are things out there, there are programs, and I know we've got to deal with the supportive, you know, permanent supportive housing. I'm, I'm not saying that that's something that I want to ignore. I don't want to take away from any other program that's going on in the county. I want to say, let's focus on these populations that are unsheltered, that are living in a lawless, drug-abused community and put it into that. And I know that that is a big ask, but I, I do think there's, there's options out there. I think that there's communities in California and throughout the country that have tried other strategies to address those things and have, have heard these court cases and have adjusted their things. And I'm not saying that we need to, you know, arrest every single person that refuses to go to one of our bridge shelters. I mean, there is a soft way to go through it. Most of our law enforcement does, don't ever go straight to enforcement, they're, they try to bring people along. In San Diego County, where they've had a lot of success with this, the first question that every law enforcement has for a homeless person they encounter is, where are you sleeping tonight? How can we help you get there? You know, and, and I think that really our, our public safety partners are, are a big part of this and our CBOs, and I think if we all could get on, get on the same page. And then that has a lot of other good downside effects. We get them into shelters or we know where they're at, then we can get through those 14 contacts as quickly as possible. We might be able to knock four or five contacts out in one day. And I think that's where you get to it, is that if we know where they're at, then we can begin to bring in, you know, public health with them, social services, public defender. You know, every one of these people, their trauma is different and I, I mean, I'm a huge believer in case management. My other big number two thing is every homeless person in Santa Barbara County should have a case manager. I mean, that, I mean, that just should be an absolute, and so, I mean, those are a few I'm looking at funding is like, how do we end the human suffering in encampments? Number two is making sure everybody has a case manager. And that we have these multidisciplinary teams, you know, Tracy McCuga and her team were amazing. And it's, it's such a small lift for some of these things. And that's one of the things that I saw is when you are drug addicted and you're in despair, you know, something small like maybe a, a, a drunk driving class that you needed to take from 10 years ago because now you can't get your driver's license, that is your whole entire world. And we can sit there and go, okay, this, there's an easy lift here, you know, I, I know Joyce Dudley, I know Joyce, Tracy, maybe we can, we can, you know, address that for you. And then we can actually have a huge progress for that person, but for that person, it's a mountain. And so, you know, my goal would, to be able to make sure that we have those case management opportunities so that we can do multidisciplinary teams. And I think the only way we're going to do that is if we get our most vulnerable, our most service resistant, our most chronic to one location or multiple locations, hopefully throughout our county, because I mean, this is a shared burden. And I think the other thing, when we were talking to the public and saying, hey, we, we need you to be supportive of safe parking programs and outdoor camping or whatever these things are, we got to show them the benefit of, okay, you know, you've done this, well, now you're not going to see somebody camping out in front of your house because we have these opportunities. So I think it's, it's both. If you ever want to get a tax measure passed to get more money for this, you're going to have to show that we're already being good with the things we have right now. And so that's my perspective coming into it, that's my passion coming into it. And I would hope that as we move forward, that we continue to have these conversations, I'm hoping, and I'm, I'm not trying to jump the gun here, is that we go back to staff and say, hey, what do we, is, are there, is there a pathway forward for the unsheltered? Can we end encampments? Can we give those tools back to our public safety partners so that at least it's an option if possible, you know, if, if they don't take advantage of these other opportunities? So that's where I'm coming from on this. And a couple smaller things that I, I want to make sure I got out there is with permanent supportive housing, I absolutely know that that's a part of the end game solution. These units got to get cheaper, okay? I, I don't know, you know, I, I don't want to be approving 400, $500,000 units anymore in this county. And I know, I, I hear about how expensive real estate is and all these types of things, but there's other places that are doing it for cheaper. And, you know, we got to find a way to be able to spread those dollars out to do more units per dollar in our county. And, you know, I know that that's a challenge, but I, I, I think, I hope that the board would be, would join with me and, and telling those, our CBOs and our partners that, hey, you guys need to find a way to, to reduce the cost in your units significantly so that we can spread those, those dollars forward. As far as the Phase 2 plan, I thought it was, it was, it was well done, but it's 100 pages. And to me, I have described it in the last couple of weeks as kind of Sears Christmas catalog, there's a lot of options there, you know, but we can't buy the whole catalog. I did some back of the napkin math and it looks like a billion dollars to, to, to get everything. We have to have a shopping list and that's, you know, and I think that's what I've, I've offered you guys and I hope, you know, for all of us maybe to, to, to add to that conversation. But let's, you know, what are our priorities moving forward? And, and, you know, I'm, I'm glad that those people, you know, our team, Kimberly and Dinah and George and some of the CBOs out there that are partners and are housing authorities, they're, they're all part of this, I, I get that. But I also want us as a team, the five of us, to really push forward on where we want to see this to go from today, so. Supervisor Hart?
I, I, well, thank you for your passion and thank you for your commitment to this issue. I think that is going to help a lot to know that, you know, we are unanimous in our interest in making progress and, and clear progress, not just talking about stuff. But this is where it gets hard, you know, there isn't a button, the button to push. And I think that Dr. Gleghorn spoke directly to, you know, you can't force people to make progress in their lives. You can make it attractive and you can give them options and you can, you can create a situation where, you know, I, everybody wants to be living in a better place. It just sometimes, as Supervisor Hartman described, folks aren't quite ready yet and it takes time to make that transition. So I, I personally, you know, I'm not supportive of a coercive strategy, I don't think that works, I just don't think the science, you know, says that works. And so, so we got to create attractive situations and, and you're right, it's, it takes case management and it takes engagement and ultimately, it does take permanent housing because, you know, the system backs up. And that's our problem, is that we can get people in shelters, but if we're not building, you know, a unit of affordable housing for every person that we're bringing into the system, they're backing up in a shelter. And they don't want to be in a shelter. And I think that's a rational choice. You know, I, I don't want to be in a shelter. I think that the room key story is a better example of how it's successful. You know, you give people a choice, would you rather be in a shelter or would you rather be in a hotel room? As we transition you to permanent housing, 10 out of 10 people are going to choose the hotel room, you know, and that's just, that makes sense from a human being standpoint. Why would you be in a crowded shelter with a lot of other people versus, you know, the humanity and the dignity of living in a hotel room and being in charge of your life? And I think that's our challenge. And so we, we've demonstrated that in COVID-19, that room key and that strategy is enormously more successful than the shelter strategy, but it's enormously more expensive and it's hard, it's unavailable, we don't have those facilities. So I don't understand exactly what we're, what we're talking about here. You know, we have an elaborate system to do outreach, it's getting better, it's getting more sophisticated, it's becoming more skilled in its outreach and we are bringing people into the, the transitional housing that we have, which is limited and in COVID even more limited, unfortunately. I think the safety valve is the safe parking program because that doesn't take bricks and mortar, it just takes, you know, permission from private property owners. But there's been a lot of work with people to try and get them to be part of this program. You know, we need to do more of that work, but, but that is the limiter, is that we're, you know, we're not, there aren't properties that have been identified where people have said, I'd like to be part of the safe parking program, but we're not operating it. It's, we don't have people stepping forward to do that. And as Supervisor Williams suggested, we need more people to do that. So if people are listening and they have resources, please let us know. I know I've heard from downtown property owners that, you know, are very frustrated by the situation, that want to be part of the solution. Be part of the solution, step up and help us. Another thing I want to talk about is that, one of the things identified in this plan is that, you know, the South Coast Navigation Center. And I'm, I'm struggling with that language because to me, every shelter is a navigation center. You know, the, the point of the shelter is to get people out of the shelter into transitional housing and into permanent housing. So, and particularly with the technology that we're all working with now with Zoom, I don't know that we need to move clients to bureaucrats. I think we need to bring Zoom to people where they are to give them services. And, and I, so I'm, I don't know that that, that whole paradigm and that language of a navigation center is appropriate for what we need to do. I think we need many navigation centers, I think every single place where we have contact with folks who are unhoused, we provide them services, whether it's dental services, medical services or library services, we ought to have a portal for people to be able to get into the system, to be able to get the help they need to get housed. And so I think reconceptualizing, you know, the navigation center thing as a specific place in one place in the county would help us make, make this more effective.
Well, I'd like to just respond that, you know, Supervisor Hart, you, you and I are rational thinking people. And I think to project ourselves onto, onto those people and think that they're going to make a good decision for their lives and some of these drug addicted situations, these places of despair, isn't accurate from my experience. And I'm, so I'm going to disrespectfully disagree with you, I, I think there has to be the stick there. You know, we, we have a civil society that we, we need to have, we need to, we need to make, we want to draw the line and say, okay, this is too far for even yourself, okay? At some point, people need to be protected even from themselves. A lot of these people are offered opportunities, but they want to stay in their encampments, you know, they want to stay in their, their social group, they want to stay with their drugs, they're very comfortable in that. And, you know, the one thing that I saw in Lompoc was a lot of them said, thank you so much for doing this because I needed that event in my life where it jarred me from my comfort level. Because unfortunately, these, a lot of our, our unsheltered population, our service resistant population are comfortable, as, as hard as it for us, for us to believe in that world. And it has such horrible downstream effects, it's, you know, not just the blight, but the environmental concerns, you know, if, we, we wouldn't accept that anywhere else in our society and, and the, the crime. And so, again, I'm going to keep pushing and, and that's fine if you're, if you're not there yet, but I'm going to try to break you down and, and work on that. But, you know, I, because I, I think that some point, we need to say that enough is enough, we can't let you, we can't let that happen. We have to find a solution. And I'm not saying that you just go around and, and round everybody up that's not willing to go to one of our shelters. I'm saying create the capacity, then work with them, and only in the worst case scenario do you go and, and use the stick. You know, it's, I'm, it's You know, it's, it's not a jump right to one to the other. Go look at the other jurisdictions that have been doing this. You know, they've, they've seen a lot of success with getting people that are chronically homeless to go, okay, you know what, I need to make a change in my life because I don't really have an option anymore out here on the streets. And so, that's where I'm trying to come from on this. And, and I, and I know that, so anyways, that's, that's where I'm, I'm pushing back on that and please Supervisor Hart.
Well, I think, you know, there probably, I'm hoping, there is not as much disagreement as it makes it sound like with the words that you're using. But arresting people to help them is not a solution. That's, that's a fact. And so, you know, we can help people by providing the help they need, but if you think arresting them and putting them in jail is going to help them, I disagree.
And I guess that's not what I'm suggesting, Supervisor Hart.
Can I step, can I step in here, Mr. Chair, to maybe try to?
Yeah, let me, I'll let you jump in. It's like, I just want, I wanted to say that, you know, there's lots of tools that we all have within public safety. And again, again, drawing the floors is what I'm looking at trying to do. So, I believe Supervisor Hartman had a comment, and sorry, and then I'll get to you Supervisor Williams.
Well, I think I was going to jump on, I don't think there's that much difference. I think it, but I think it is a language issue and, and talking about forcing and sticks and things like that. For me, what the fire chiefs did is very significant. I mean, we're, we're facing crises on top of each other. And when we have these encampments where people are cooking with fires or even keeping themselves warm with fires in a high-fire area, that's a disaster waiting to happen. And it's, it threatens the people in the encampments and it threatens really all of us. So that's an example of, I think we have, at least for the more service-resistant, unsheltered people in these encampments, we've, we've been, you know, we've kind of out of sight, out of mind. And we, we can't do that anymore. I think we all agree on, on that point. And what I came to conclude in Isla Vista was, we, we need, people need routine, they need order, they need structure. One of the reasons COVID has been so disastrous to mental health, especially for children, is they don't have that structure in their lives. So, to nudge people out of unmanaged encampments and to bring them into more managed situations, maybe managed isn't the best word, but it's, it's a word that I'm thinking of, but to, to create more routine, more, more stability, more order in their lives, I, I think that is the goal. At least that's what I've come to conclude, that if you can get people stabilized, then visiting the Sobering Center, they said, in 90 days, if we have that much time with somebody who's stable, we, we can pull them out of drug addiction, we can pull them out of alcohol addiction, but it doesn't happen in two weeks. We need at least 90 days. So we've got to find ways of stabilizing people. And, and yes, we need housing, no doubt, all kinds, a continuum of different kinds of housing, but we, we have too large a problem to have the Cadillac version. We, we need tents, we need tiny homes, we need, we need more quickly. And I think that's what Chair Nelson is trying to articulate, or at least that's the piece of it that I jump on because I, I agree with it emphatically.
All right, Supervisor Williams?
Well, I, I would just venture to guess that not, that what we agree on is progress and we can neither make progress on voluntary ending of homelessness nor what I might term accountability that encourages the, the, the end of homelessness without a place for them to go. And I think Mr. Ghazani will confirm that essentially our legal framework is, we can't close these, we can't close these camps unless we offer them a place to go. And so that means we need to build places to go or make places to go. And I think some of these are difficult. I mean, finding a site for our safari tents or, or more pallet houses is, is, is difficult. But with permanent supportive housing, we've identified several places that are county land, some of which is, you know, has funding, but a couple of which just don't have funding yet. So I, I would just ask that perhaps what we can do is increase the funding if, no, of course, I think this is a big if, the federal aid package comes in as it is, as it is looking or even halfway as it is looking, that, that we would have the capability to do that and to make a deeper financial commitment and maybe the political will to get some of these places built. And your point about price, Chair Nelson, I think it's going to work out in our favor right now, unfortunately, because the private industry is building so few houses. Applications are way down. So that means a lot of people in construction won't be in work soon. That means prices and bids are lower and we should act now.
Supervisor Lavenino? You're good?
Yeah.
All right. Well, and I just want to circle back after Supervisor Hartman's comments to, because I, I know Supervisor Hart knows that I respect him quite a bit. And, you know, for someone who is proclaiming to have a lot of compassion for homeless, last thing is I want to do is see arrest any, any of our, our people in our community. And so, that's not what I was trying to get to. And so, you know, I want to educate, I want to coerce, I want to, you know, heavily suggest. And I think what I'm hearing though, you know, no matter what, is we do need to have someplace for them to go. And so, whether we ever, ever go down that, you know, that, you know, force piece, because I'm not hot on that either. I don't, you know, I, I know that our jails should not be de facto homeless shelters or mental health facilities. I mean, that's, that makes no sense whatsoever. That's not lost on me. So, I get it, but I think maybe my, my, my ask or what I'm, I'm going to ask is maybe that we ask staff to come back with a plan to get, get capacity for our unsheltered population. What is, what are, what does the, the menu look like for us to get there? What are the temporary bridge shelters that could be built? What are the pallet homes that could be built? You know, there's, there's a lot of different models out there from, you know, Kern County to San Diego County and, and other jurisdictions throughout the country that have really tackled this and, and built that capacity. And I like to see us try to build that capacity in Santa Barbara County. That, that's where I was, I'm trying to get to. And so, I'd ask, at some point, maybe we could ask staff to come back and look at those types of things and, and maybe do a presentation to us in the future. Supervisor Hart?
Yeah, I think that is a great idea, but at the end of the staff research, there will be a question of where. And if the board members want to offer suggestions to staff where in their district, we will short-circuit a lot of effort and get to the, the bottom line faster.
Absolutely. Supervisor Hartman?
Yes. There are a couple of bottlenecks, but I, I wanted to give a shout out to Good Sam in particular. In Isla Vista, the question was, could we have, find a provider? And, and we're really short on providers. And they, it was in December and they put in a proposal and they've done a super job and we're really fortunate to have them and others in our county who are the providers. And then, we need land. And it has to be land that we can have services and utilities, so it can't just be raw land or it takes a lot. And so, maybe we need to take, as Supervisor Hart is suggesting, some responsibility, not just staff, but each supervisor has to think, where in my district could we have this different kind of housing? And, and we need to engage our communities. I know Sharon Byrne was on the phone and I know she worked very, very hard in the Milpus area to work with the, the business district, the chamber. And it takes that kind of community support and we're in a good position to try to do some of that.
And I agree. And I, you know, one of the things that I had, when I've been thinking this through was, you know, even some of these shelters areas that we might suggest don't necessarily have to be permanent at that location forever. And I think that's the other pitch we might have to the neighbors, is you know what, this isn't something that you're going to have to live with for the rest of your life, it's not going to reduce your home values permanently if that's what you're concerned about. You know, it's going to be something that's going to be here for two or three years, whatever that capacity is. And then, what's the next site? You know, it is a shared burden that we should all have in our, you know, each one of our districts, but all throughout the county. And I think it's, so, I mean, that would be something I would be really interested in is.
Excellent point. I just have to jump in.
Yeah. I, I'm, I'm, I'm down. You know, I've, I've had some suggestions already to staff in my district and I'm, I'm looking forward to throwing more things against the wall and see what sticks. And again, I think temporary is, is a big key for people because I think if you tell someone they don't have to do it forever, a community, you know, that that's, that burden for them specifically, I think there is a lot more willingness to accept that. And if this board, which is going to be here for at least the next two to four years, I think we continue that vision and a commitment to each other, we can, we can, we can keep going down that road. So.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Two things. One is, I think on, on, on that front, I think, when we're talking about citing, I think it's wise for us to bring in, you know, our city counterparts so that many of them have already thought about this and talked about where good sites might be or, you know, what's kind of off limits. So it might not be a bad idea to rope those folks in. And then, the other thing is, I think, you know, at least in my district, the more we see encampments and that people start to realize that the way to get rid of those is that we have to create capacity, might get less resistance from neighbors. Now, I know that's not going to be the same in everybody's district. Some people try to build one affordable house and, you know, we end up with a full room. So, but, you know, I, I think at least in my district, people are really getting, you know, it's just concerning. They don't understand. And some of it, it's not that they want to see the person arrested, but they're like, how in America can this, this, this family be living, you know, right off the roadway with a tent? It doesn't make any sense. And so, you know, hopefully there's not as much resistance as we expect that there will be. And then, like I said, I think, at least in the city of Santa Maria, I think it, for me, you know, I'll be reaching out, but it would be nice as a staff direction to, to, you know, speak with city managers and elected officials in those cities.
Right.
And Mr. Chair?
One, one quick question or want to go to Assistant CEO Mastasich for a moment, then I'll go to you Supervisor Williams.
Chair Nelson, should the board adopt the plan today? Our next action step, as we've indicated in our, the, one of the last slides regarding the steps over the next six months, would be to, of course, then bring this to our partners and the cities, look for their adoption as well. And one of the critical aspects of that is referenced in the plan in, in a number of the strategies is exactly what the board is referring to. Finding those collective sites, finding those opportunities and being very deliberative about identifying each of those sites so that there is a, there are opportunities and we can move more swiftly enacting a number of these strategies. What I also heard from the board, at least from, from many, was certainly focusing, as also referenced in the plan, and we can certainly target it and bring it out more clearly, is the focus on the no-to-low-barrier sheltering options. Temporary sheltering options, looking at some innovative opportunities there. And we can certainly bring that back in a more targeted way, but those are interwoven. But in terms of priorities, we can, we can certainly do that. The other thing I just wanted to point out is, from a staff perspective, we certainly want to move very quickly as well. And I also wanted to bring to everyone's attention that the elected officials forum, the elected leaders forums that we use to discuss these issues, we're suggesting that it meet now monthly rather than on a quarterly basis so that we can move more quickly through each of these issues once we reach out to our, our cities for adoption. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mastasich. Supervisor Williams, then Supervisor Hart.
Well, we, you know, if a call is for sites in each district, we have identified two sites in the first district for permanent supportive housing. One, as some of you might remember, is next to the new proposed probation building. We can act on that. We could get that out to bid. We could look at what the different mixes of financing are. I think that there, there are actions that we could take in the next couple of months to get those types of projects going. I, I also think we should pursue the temporary housing, though, you know, obviously, it's got to be careful because these proposals have blown up in jurisdictions faces on multiple times. And, you know, a mix of determination and good strategy as to where could make a big difference for us. But we got two sites in the first district now. Let's use them.
All right. Thank you Supervisor Williams. Supervisor Hart?
Yeah, I just want to thank Ms. Mastasich for pointing us toward the elected leaders forum and that venue to integrate, you know, our partners at the local government level. That's, many of the sites that we need are in cities in the county and we need, we need to be engaged hand in hand with our elected official colleagues at the local level. And I think Supervisor Lavenino is right, that as encampments are more prominent visually, constituents are more open to innovative solutions that would, would solve that and address that and migrate people out of encampments, which are, you know, the last thing we want, to, you know, more stable housing situations that are, that are healthy for everybody. And I think that's, that's, that's a new element in this discussion that we will need to take advantage of with, in speaking with our constituents in the community. If there's, if everybody's ready, I could make a motion to approve A through E. I think we've provided the direction as appropriate for the work plan priorities and other directions. Staff has captured that and I would make that motion.
Okay.
All right. We've got a, a motion in a second. I just wanted to make sure as part of that, you know, that there'd be some type of staff would look, look at these, as long as the maker of the motion understood that that was part of what I was hoping to get out of it. If that's, then I'm, I'm really comfortable with that and looking forward to, to voting for this motion. Any additional comments from Santa Maria? All right. Madam Clerk?
Supervisor Williams?
Aye.
Supervisor Hart?
Aye.
Supervisor Hartman?
Aye.
Supervisor Lavenino?
Aye.
Chair Nelson?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
All right. Well, I want to thank Supervisor Williams for traveling up north to attend the meeting and staff for, for being here on an off day for the board. I think it was an important discussion and I'm looking forward to working with all of you on this issue over the next few years. Thank you. This meeting is adjourned and our next regular meeting will be March 2nd.